We'll pause now for a moment of silence. William T. Fitzgerald, 82, of Carol Atkinson, who died March 6, 2015, at home, surrounded by his loving family. He was the husband of Pearl Atkinson Fitzgerald. Born in Newport on September 16, 1932, he was a lifelong and proud fifth order of Newport. He was a graduate of Rogers High School, a veteran of the Korean War. After the war, Bill joined the United States Postal Service and worked as a letter carrier for over thirty years, retiring in 1989. Bill was a lifelong parishioner of St. Augustine Church.
...was a member of the Newport Knights of Columbus. Besides his wife, Bill leaves his children. William T. Fitzgerald Jr. and his wife Marjorie of Newport. Karen Chesley and her husband William of Middlebury, Florida. Carol Sinotti and her husband Mark of Newport. Jane Fitzgerald of Newport. Patrick Fitzgerald and his wife Cassandra of Newport. Kevin Fitzgerald and his wife Amy of Portsmouth. And John Fitzgerald and his wife Carrie of Naples, Florida. Is there anyone here for public comment?
No.
No one signed up? And no one wants to speak? Okay. Student council update? Catherine isn't here. Looked at you.
Looking younger every day.
Mass Insight for Education.
I think you want good resolutions?
Oh, no. Did I skip it?
For the students.
Oh, okay. We have several recognitions tonight. The boys track and field team. Newport County Boys, all-boys and girls basketball team players. And recognition by the governor of our governor for the day. So let's start with the Rogers High School indoor track and field class champions.
Mrs. Gaines, they're not able to be here tonight because they're at a track meet?
Ah, that's right.
So could we put that off another month?
Yes.
So that they can be here to receive that award? Thank you.
Absolutely. What about the basketball teams?
Basketball players are here.
We got a couple here.
All right.
They were recognized for making the county.
Would you like to do this?
You can say it. I'll give it to the young men.
Okay. Or I have to read it? Then I'll give it to you. So you go on.
Yeah.
I'll hand it to you after I read it. Newport Public Schools Certificate of Recognition. This certifies that Koran Bostic, Rogers High School, is awarded the Certificate of Recognition for being named to the Newport Daily News 2014-2015 All-County Boys Basketball Team, presented this fourteenth day of April 2015.
That's wonderful.
Okay. It's the first day.
Look at the camera. Look at the camera.
Cameras over there. Come close. Come close. There.
Okay.
There's more.
There's another one.
Kareem Cooper. Newport Public Schools recognizes Kareem and is awarded the Certificate of Recognition for being named to the Newport Daily News 2014-15 All-County Boys Basketball Team this fourteenth day of April 2015. Congratulations, guys.
Their families are in the audience.
Yeah. Where are their families? Come on, stand up. Stand up. Okay. Yeah, Katima Bowden. I'm sure you all saw in the paper. She's a fourth grader, is she?
No, she's a sixth grader.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grader at Thompson, who was the, won the essay contest that the governor sponsored, Governor for the Day. And she is unable to be with us tonight, but she will be serving as Governor for a Day next week during school vacation. And she and her family will return, attend the May 12 meeting. Some more notoriety, the good kind, for Newport Public Schools. Do you want to do the presentation now? All of this was under student activities.
Do we have another presentation?
The RH, oh, the Newport Project. Can we do that one first before Mass Insight?
Where is it?
No, the Newport Project's, no, Mass Insight will go with it. All right. All right. So we want to thank you very much for your accomplishments. You should be very proud, and your families should be very proud of what you've done. You've represented our school very well, and we thank you for that. So I just want to say that I'm very, I feel very lucky and fortunate to be the superintendent here. And I've watched you throughout the season, and I pop in on the games, and you've served us well and our community well. So I just want to let you know, we look forward to hearing more good things about you going forward. And I want you to always remember, like, you, I'm a Viking too, and we stick together. Okay? All right. And this is when we say, if you'd like to go home and do your homework, we totally understand.
Unless there are other small committed people who would like to comment, sing some praises for our young men.
I just wanted to say, these boys, you know, do more than just play basketball, too. They support, you know, all of our sports and, you know, football. And it's just, it's great to see them involved. And especially this year when they, when the tragedy occurred, you know, you guys all stepped up to the plate and, you know, supported each other. And that's a testament to a great team and, you know, with a great coach and great students.
Great character. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the families for coming tonight. Thank you very much.
And who's doing this?
Okay. Yes. You'd like me to introduce them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hi. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce Matt Bangchard. I've never had to say your last name. Bachard. I always call him, I always call him Matt. And he's here with Vincenzia Valencia. Are you going to? Valencia Johnson is here. And they're our two of a great team from Mass Insight out of Boston, Massachusetts. And they've been helping the district and working with specifically our middle school and high school teachers. And will continue to help us to focus on our graduation rate and our course selections and especially our AP. We're trying to raise the rigor, and we're also trying to bring the district to the next step and the next level. So I thank you for being here this evening. All right? This is Matt. And Valencia's over here.
Thank you, Superintendent Jermaine. Thank you, members of the school committee, for allowing us to talk a little bit about the work we're doing with your strong AP and middle, other high school teachers and your middle school teachers as well. Valencia's gonna click the PowerPoint for us. We just have a few slides. Don't, don't go to sleep yet. So who are we? We work in about 21 different places across the country. We work with states, we work with large districts, and we work with small districts in Massachusetts in particular to help school systems improve their rigor of their classes and to, mostly in Massachusetts, to work to make sure that students graduate college and career-ready. And we do that mostly through the AP program, the Advanced Placement Program. You can see on the map some of the places we work. Everywhere as far west as the state of Nevada and Colorado, to New Orleans, Jefferson Parish in Louisiana. And then we also work in Portland, Maine, and Providence, and all over the state of Massachusetts, and over 70 high schools currently there. We really combine three different sets of services. A lot of times, people come into districts and they have a program, and it's kind of take it or leave it. And that is not our approach at all. What we do is we have a suite of services in academic, organizational, and community spheres. So when those work, those, we believe that when you get those three components working together, that you can support students across the board. And so we try to hit all three of those legs of the stool, if you will. Our academic supports are, that are being offered in Newport right now, as we're doing AP training and coaching. I see some of the teachers who have been to our AP training. I checked in before the meeting. She said everything's been really good, so I'm happy to hear that. And then we work also at the middle school program to help them align their instruction to support the strategic goals of the school committee and of the superintendent, particularly around making sure more students are served heterogeneously in the classrooms there. So we're starting that work with your middle school teachers, and Valencia is integral to that effort. In terms of organizational supports, we met with a body of your faculty and administrators in the fall, including Linda, who I see here, to put into place a plan to support the district as it moves forward at the middle and high school level to improve their, improve the alignment between middle and high school, particularly around eighth grade math was an area of focus. So we, basically, we helped bring them together and put a plan in place to be able to execute. And by all accounts, that's happening. And also, we're helping to, and the performance management support, tracking those goals. And then, in terms of family engagement and partnership development, what we are beginning to do is to recruit AP students who will take the test seriously. I see some future AP students, I imagine, here before me, who will take the test and do very well, I'm sure. And to support partnerships that can fund for, fund the AP exams and also other activities that promote college and career readiness. So our work is successful in Massachusetts in particular. We claim a lot of credit for helping the state of Massachusetts become a national leader in AP achievement in particular. Eighty-five percent of the students who are in our programs that are low-income persist in college compared to 68 of percent of Massachusetts students in general. And then, depending on how the numbers are cut in different states, that's twice what is happening nationally, twice the rate. So taking the courses in the Mass Insight partnered schools has a great benefit to the students because they are able to get into school as freshmen in college, do well enough to, and do well enough to successfully become sophomores in the second year. Latin American students persist at 85 percent, the same as our overall number, right? The same as our overall number of persisting students. And African American students at 84 percent, so essentially the same number there of the students in our classes are, in the classes taught by Mass Insight engaged teachers are persisting. So whereas in many places you see a gap between Latin American and African American achievement in, in schools that are not working with us, you don't see that in our program. We are, there's a lot of work to be done, and there's a lot of credit that has to go to the students, of course, first and foremost, and the teachers. But we do think that we provide supports that help with these very important measures. So when we came in last fall, we engaged with the superintendent. The superintendent was familiar with our work in Providence with Superintendent Lou Sinner's team from her time there. And then also with our Massachusetts work to a lesser extent. So we really said, well, you know, we do a lot of academic work in Massachusetts, and we'd like to bring that down to Rhode Island. And when we came in, we saw that the superintendent was very committed to this work. Your principals were very committed. Jamie Crowley, who's a big fan of the work, and we're glad that he's happy. Principal Goss at, Goth?
Goth.
Goth at, I'm sorry, Goss at the high school, knew of our work from his time before and has been supportive coming in as he's, you know, becoming more familiar with the role. And then the teachers were very excited when we talked to them to really raise the rigor of the classes, not only the AP classes, but then to bring those same practices in their AP classes into the other classes they teach. And then we talked to students, and the students said, you know, we want to be in these difficult classes, and we want to do the work, and when the teachers invite us in and recruit us to come into these classes, we're, we're more than game. And we have shared that message, and will continue to share that message, that the students want to work hard, and they want to feel supported. All right. A few things that, you know, as we move forward in the partnership, that we want to make sure that we're focused on as an area of growth. One, we want the students to have more ownership of their learning and their future pathways. And we think the biggest indicator of that is just taking the exam and the AP courses. So the AP exam, it's an exam, right? So it's not exciting, you know? They're not going to get the basketball accolades necessarily, but they do when they're in our program because we have pep rallies for AP. And what we want students to be able to do is to really sit that exam, which is a college-level exam, get the experience in a much lower stakes environment than a college freshman calculus classroom. Then also, if they pass the exam with a three, four, or five, which is important, but it isn't everything, then the students can transfer that credit to a wide number of schools, wider than are available through the dual enrollment programs in the state of Rhode Island that we're supportive of. But we also think if students want to go to college in another state and the AP credit's going to help them do that, that that's something that we want them to have in their toolbox. And then also to improve communication district-wide, and tonight is one aspect of that work. And continuing through the spring and into the summer and beyond, we want to continue to trumpet the value of the AP program, the level of rigor, and the supports that students find valuable in, across the board. That, you know, once they find themselves prepared for the hardest possible classes they can take in, in high school, then they just are that much more prepared for college and career moving forward. So for now, what's happening, so we're supporting the AP program, continuing to train and support the teachers in the high school for AP. There will be more AP teachers going this summer to our training. And we're continuously asking Superintendent Jermaine if she wants to recruit more teachers to teach more AP classes. We're happy to support that. We know it's, it's difficult sometimes to ask teachers to do that, but we think that the professional development opportunities we provide make it worth it. In the middle grades, we're working through the teacher teams to try and help them move towards a system where there is more heterogeneous grouping of students so that you can close achievement gaps in the middle school, just as you saw the students in the high school achieving at the same levels. We know that there is a shared goal in Newport with Mass Insight of having that kind of success in the middle grades as well. And then the leadership planning support. So, you know, when we have the College Success Management Institute that we ran in the spring, we're happy to come down and support the superintendent and her team. We talk to Assistant Superintendent Booth probably weekly in order to make sure that the work continues to move forward and to support the efforts of the superintendent as well. And I don't really want to talk at anyone anymore, but I would be happy to answer questions.
All right. So you brought up about students taking AP, the AP tests. And in your, I'll just say, in our district, we've kind of gone through a little bit of a transformation. At one time, the children all paid for themselves, other than free and reduced kids can get theirs paid for. But our other students paid for themselves. And then we went through a period where we want everybody to take the test, so the district paid for it. And then we went through a period where we just required the kids to take it, found out that's illegal. You cannot, unless you pay for it, you cannot require them to take the test. So now we're at a point where basically free and reduced lunch kids get theirs paid for. What is your, what have you seen in terms of what's gone in other states? Do they normally pay? Because, because those are the kids now that opt out are the ones that have to pay for them. So what have you seen and what is the best practice in terms of, of, you know, paying for tests?
We say pay for them, and the students need to take them if they want that AP credential on there.
You say pay for them?
Mm-hmm. So we, we help, we try and fundraise in order to get it, to get the test paid for so that you can set that high expectation, so that you can't sit in an AP class and say, well, you know, what I would have done if they, they didn't even have AP in my high school, but, I went to high school in Missouri a long time ago, but they, they didn't have AP. They just kind of said, well, if you want to do that, it's a test and it's some credit. And I was like, that credit sounds important, you know? I didn't go, my parents didn't go to college. So I had to figure this out on my own. Now, what we say is, listen, you're going to take the test, you're going to take the class, you're going to take the test, you're going to get the credit, we're going to work with you to pass the class. We're going to work with you on Saturdays to support you in taking the class. And we think those high expectations are crucial. And we, by and large, in our districts, the students, once they go to the Saturdays, and, yeah, I know your eyes are going to roll a little when I say this, they enjoy going to the classes on the Saturdays, the three times a year. Yeah, I know, right? So it's important that, because they get to see that other kids are having the same experiences, and that then they can learn from their friends in other districts who are not far from here, Fall River, you know, New Bedford, other places that, they're not super far, and it's the same, you know, they're, they can look smarter than kids from Massachusetts, which is always good, you know, for a kid to be able to say, I'm smarter than them. So we think that's important.
Madam Chair, question for the speaker, please.
Yes.
Thank you very much for, for being here and for presenting tonight. What a fantastic, fantastic opportunity and a fantastic program.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. First, a follow-up from my colleague, Mrs. Bowden. What is the percentage of free and reduced versus non-free and reduced who take the AP exams?
So I don't have the total aggregate number on that, but we can get you that data to see how many students nationally Massachusetts and Rhode Island have, break down that way. I think we have, we can get the Rhode Island data and send it along tomorrow. But if, there is definitely, the, the underrepresented groups are students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. In the science and math disciplines, girls are underrepresented unless you're in a Mass Insight school. And we can get you numbers on gender as well. And then, of course, students of color participate in the exams less than in, than white students in most places. We can get you the breakdown.
AP exams across the board, is there a penalty for registering, for registering late?
To, I don't think for registering, I don't think you can register late. But the only penalty associated with the test is when a student signs up and the, and the student doesn't sit the exam, then the district has, there's a clawback on the test fee when they get support. So, or there's a penalty to the district. So really requiring and, requiring students to sit the exam and making sure that students can get to the exam is important in order to make sure they appreciate, they get the full value of the program.
Super. And then last question. The program itself, not in other districts, because that's not our business, but Newport, who funds the program?
So the superintendent has fully funded the program from their budget, from your budget this last year.
So it was, it was an authorized budget item in the, in the 14 budget?
It's part of, correct. It's part of our grants, exactly.
Thank you very much.
Philosophy is the heterogeneous grouping. You mentioned that a few times. Is this belief, the belief is then that the students who are more capable, sometimes it's by their performance brings some of the others, help to challenge those who might be struggling? Are you looking at it that way?
Well...
Or who might be, maybe the youngsters who may have, may have thought they could not deal with this, sometimes the others can be good role models for them. Is that part of the philosophy?
I mean, I think, I think that's true. I think, we believe that every student should get the same opportunity to gain knowledge every year. So a year of instruction should be a year of achievement gain, right? For every student, whether they start at grade level, above grade level, or below grade, above, below, or at grade level. We think that it's an instructional challenge that educators face every day to make sure that they can reach all of the students in that classroom to be able to say, I'm both challenging my high achievers and my students who are behind. So there are definitely benefits to heterogeneity in the classroom beyond, beyond that. It's just getting teachers comfortable with and equipped to handle the diverse range of students in their classroom is, is a very, very expensive in terms of time and money proposition.
Energy.
And, yes, energy as well. And so we, we actually resource it. You know, like, this program resources that type of differentiation for teachers in the AP program, whereas in prior, you know, in, in the old days of AP where you had, have three letters of recommendation, including one from a congressman to get in, you know, you, you know, you were already screening some students out. We think that that was challenging enough. Now we have tools at our disposal to help people teach folks across the spectrum.
Less elitist, so to speak.
Yes, yes. It's definitely, we think so, and we think that the achievement, the AP achievement exam itself is, is pretty egalitarian. And it's the one measure that we have right now in the country that is widely accepted as being, you know, the benchmark. If there was a different benchmark, we might run a different program.
Thank you.
Oh, that's it?
Oh. Okay. I, I assume that this is based on a growth model.
So...
Your, your success, the success of the student in the classroom, there must, I'm assuming there is, it is based on a growth model.
Student achievement.
Student achievement.
Right. Yes.
You mentioned taking the student where he is and moving the student forward. Is there a formal tool for that, or is it left to the individual teacher to develop their own instrument?
Well, in the AP exam, in the AP program, we definitely have a more formalized structure for this right now. There's a mock, there's instructional support throughout the year. So the teachers go to training in the summer and then, you know, prepare their lessons, and they get support in figuring out how they're going to teach a greater number of students who probably are at a different, you know, levels of capability when they walk through the door. Then, there's about two months of instruction. In October, there's a two-day training that teachers can go to to say, now that I know my students, I can really dial in on the kinds of supports I need to provide across my classroom. Then, in the early, early in the, or late in the second semester, there's a mock exam. And so now the students go, oh, this is, this is what an AP exam is. We've been talking about this all year, I just didn't think it connected to the exam. And then they see where they really are. We have that graded by people who grade the AP exam itself. We pay for them to grade it for us. And now the teacher can really hone in on what the students didn't get and then prepare them for the exam so that when it comes time to sit the actual AP exam, they basically have done a dry run. So we do track growth in that manner. When we work with the middle school, we look at the tools that the districts already have to measure growth across time, still trying to set a high bar. At the end of eighth grade, we want all students to, as many students as possible to graduate, or to leave eighth grade, having completed Algebra I, knowing that if, if you can get every student to complete Algebra I by the end of ninth grade, that they're set up to be able to take college-level coursework. So we do look at a growth model over time. We know that some students are going to come in at the beginning of sixth grade, and you're going to say, we're going to need a couple of years to get them up there, but we're going to try real hard to get them Algebra I ready between sixth and seventh grade.
So, thank you, Matt. So just to give the committee some context, and those that are new to the committee, Mass Insight, a year ago started, when I first arrived in Newport, started talking to us and actually reached out to us, thank you very much, and offered to bring down some of their services to our community because they had, had seen the goals of the school committee as far as increasing rigor, increasing AP exams, and what the committee wanted to do going forward. So looking at our grant funding, and I believe we do have some local funds, we were able, and with the support of Mass Insight, helping us to gain some funding as well, we were able to piece it all together so we could bring their services to our school and provide the professional development for our teachers. Having said all that, we have had discussions about the APs and paying for the APs, and Mass Insight has agreed to work with us to do fundraising for that. Mass Insight has agreed to work with us to do fundraising for that. So, we're trying to create a good partnership, a nationally-known partnership, and a partnership that's also showed over time, there have been tremendous growth for students and school systems. So, I just want to thank, um, Matt and Valencia for coming down to Aquinic Island to share their story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next one is a great presentation, it's the Newport Project. This is something that the Van Buren Foundation has, um, been partnering with us and supporting for our school district, and I am going to hand the podium and the presentation over to English Chair, Zenovia Cannelli, and she will introduce the team and the students, or maybe they'll do the introducing, so, take it away. Thank you.
Oops. Good, good evening. I'm Mrs. Cannelli, and I'm here this evening with Dr. Noonan, Mrs. Borgetta, for the purpose of sharing with you our work with the Newport Project, which, as Mrs. Jermaine said, is a grant-funded program in its second full year at Rogers High School. Uh, we did have one pilot year prior to the, to the second year. On behalf of all of us, the teachers and the students, I would like to thank Mrs. Jermaine for allowing us to be placed on the agenda, for her continued support for this program, and for being our first guest speaker this year. The students were impressed in hearing Mrs. Jermaine's story, and they were also, um, impressed by, they were inspired by her message. So, what's going to happen tonight is we're gonna, the teachers will share, um, the information regarding the background of the program, and the students will share some of their work and thoughts about Newport Project. And then, following our presentation, we're happy to answer questions that you may have. I also have to take one moment just to introduce Mrs. Mara Catoia, who has also been an integral part of working with us. Um, she is in as a substitute special educator, and is with us until May 8th, hopefully.
That's her.
And then, um, I think it, at this point, it would be really nice for the students, I'd like to introduce our students that did come. In the back, um, operating the PowerPoint is Summer Rogers. Uh, we also have Candia London, Kevin Aru, Keandre, I forgot, Ca, 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 Ashton, oh my God, Keandre, I'm so sorry. Um, Robert Hilliard McBride, and Ossie Malikus. I have one other quick thing to say, um, and that is, we have a little technology glitch, um, but we're still going to go forward, and, um, just to be noted, school committee, um, we did create, um, the students created a video using, um, this Mac that belongs to Ms. Noonan, and we also were able to create it in, within the classroom using the Apple, we had, we were able to project it using an Apple TV. This particular room is not equipped with the HDMI, and, um, so therefore, we can't project through the Prometheum Ward. Um, it was our, we did not inform technology prior to, to this. However, um, these wonderful gentlemen...
Oh, here come the track stars.
Oh, great. These are, these are students?
Yes. Track stars.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, watch.
Hi.
Kelvin Sorlando and Lamar Campbell. I'm sorry, Lamont.
So, um, we'll have, go ahead, you guys want to, we're still gonna go forward.
Okay.
My name is Robert McBride, and I'm in 11th...
Wait a minute, turn the mic up, and speak into it.
Okay, the rest of you should come down more, down by Ossie.
My name is Robert McBride, and I'm in 11th grade, and this is my third year in the Newport Project.
Hello, I'm Ossie Malikus, this is my first year in the Newport Project, and I'm a senior, and me and Robert created a film about what we do in the Newport Project and some places we visited, and we also added a little song at the end that we created, a little, you know, hip-hop.
Can we s...
Oh.
Okay.
Should we turn off the lights?
When asking a student what their high school is like, this is the image that you get. When asking the Newport Project, this is what we see, because we realize that Newport is ours.
The first journey Newport Project took this year was to Rose Island.
Charles and Daisy are completing food notes on Rose Island. Gray water is recycled water that is used over and over again on Rose Island.
Gray water is used for all the basic necessities on Rose Island, except for drinking, because gray water could contain bacteria and parasites.
Students enjoy the freedom and the ability to be able to explore on their own in Rose Island.
Teachers like to give us responsibilities because they wanna help mold us into young and respectful, carrying a nose.
What's up, Lamont, you having fun down there?
After visiting Rose Island, students in the Newport Project decided to build their own wind turbines, after seeing that Rose Island got a lot of energy from wind.
As you can see here, students encountered some problems while trying to convert the wind into power.
After completing the wind turbines, students had to measure how much power their turbines produced.
The next destination the Newport Project decided to visit was being glass located on downtown Newport Island.
The reason why we decided to visit was because we were doing scientific research on the chemical makeup of glass.
At being glass, we even got to make our own ornaments. Maria, oh my God, look how much fun she's had.
That's another thing about the Newport Project, one of our main focuses is bringing fun into the schools so the students enjoy it.
We even got the luxury to eat at the Cantor House, it was so delicious.
The Newport Project took a great interest in the Gilded Age. We even had time to visit three supporting mansions located on Bellevue Avenue, including the Breakers, the Elms, and lastly, the Marble House.
One thing that makes the Newport Project so different from the traditional classroom is that students get to choose their own interests.
These students here got to take their interests to the next level. They even got to visit the brand-new car museum located in Newport, around, our next destination was the Newport Bio Diesel, where we got to accomplish a lot of fieldwork.
On our tour, students were excited that they got a chance to see fuel being made hands-on.
After visiting Newport Bio Diesel, the Newport Project decided to do an experiment on their own on converting used vegetable oil into bio diesel.
This process was a good challenge for us because it required many difficult steps, including measuring all the chemicals added correctly and also taking the correct temperature.
After successfully converting the fuel, students got their adrenaline to feel how it was to be a real-life scientist.
Now that you've seen what it's like to be in the Newport Project, young us...
Dance, dance, it's gonna be good.
It's the Newport Project, and we know how to get it done. People be jealous, 'cause we know how to have so fun.
Escape in the building, but not always on the run, because we're doing education, it's not a vacation, we take this serious, just like it's a real workstation, but our teachers don't pressure us like constipation, 'cause success is the only thing that we be chasing.
See, Newport Project's the best in the nation, so we had to come in and pull off an invasion, bring it back, motivation, 'cause it was desperation, now the only thing they seek is the real aspiration.
Everyone in school wants to join and be cool, but it requires you don't come and act a fool, 'cause we're not playing games, this class is not for wanks, it's only for the ones that wanna build their brains, yeah, we come to class ready, every day and steady, consistency is heavy, but we fight it till it's deadly, and I know I drive a Chevy, but in the future, don't be vently, and I owe it to this class, because they always taught me plenty, it's time to switch it up, and I will hit you with this gently.
Newport Project is the best, and it will go for the next century.
Cheese is up next, and he's been prepping in the pantry, so it's time for him to hit this, make it go off so relentlessly.
Yeah, I'm in that Bentley, where my boy, uh, we know he made his rap, no matter what the cost, throw me a quick test, and I'm catching like a turkey, I'm gonna end up catching passes like my boy Randy Moss.
It's the Newport Project, and we ain't ever lost.
Very good. Can we get that sent to us electronically?
Yes. Could, could, uh, Ossie? Ms. Cannelli?
Yes.
Could we have that sent to us electronically, and we will post it on the website?
That would be great.
Okay.
That would be great. Um, it's, it's too bad, anyways, um, did you wanna say anything, boys?
Um, well, I mean, we did put, like, some time into making this and stuff, and, like, I think Robert did a good job, he was the one, like, putting everything into the computer and stuff, and then, like, I would be, like, the ones, like, taking the pictures and, like, talking, so it was, like, like a good teamwork, probably.
I think getting it on the website is a good idea. Okay. Give everybody a chance to see it. Robert, get that, you're gonna have to help us do that, all right? Okay, so, let's, can you go to the next slide? Yeah, very good. All right, so, let's talk a little bit about the background, okay? So, this program is place-based education, and actually, Van Buren, the Van Buren Foundation funded us the first year because of the concept of place-based education. And, um, basically, as you can see, it means that we use the community as the starting point for content area studies, so learning moves beyond the classroom walls. So, in the Newport Project, the study of English and science is conducted through both physical and intellectual exploration of the wealth of historical, natural, and cultural resources available in Newport. Newport itself becomes a primary text, and so, through the immersion in the local cultures, in the landscapes, in the opportunities, and the experiences that Newport affords us, students are able to develop their personal interests, which hopefully will increase their motivation to learn. So, what inspired us for the Newport Project? Um, the Newport School District has been a member of the League of Innovative Schools since 2011, and through this affiliation, Dr. Noonan and I had the opportunity to attend many conferences and meetings. The League of Innovative Schools is a partner with the Rhode Island Department of Education, Office of Multiple Pathways, and it offers it both administrators and teachers in five New England states the opportunity to explore 21st-century models of innovative teaching and learning. Their document, Global Best Practices, provides guidelines for research-based practices such as student choice, personalization, interdisciplinary instruction, experiential learning, and collaboration. We took that document, and we integrated it into our thinking, and the purpose of doing so was to address the needs of the students who have shown disengagement from the educational environment, for a variety of different reasons, and with whom we interact every day. As a result, the Newport Project was born.
So, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the community, community-based fieldwork, which really is the backbone of this program. Students in the Newport Project follow established fieldwork methods and practice, they approach fieldwork in the same way college students and graduate students do. They conduct preliminary research to decide what questions they need to answer, and we teach them how to observe and record while they're out in the field. They take scholarly field notes, conduct interviews, take photographs, take videos, and then, once they've gathered all their, all of their information, they return to the classroom and synthesize it. They synthesize it through a variety of forms, including team meetings and class discussion. And finally, they produce culminating projects, papers, and presentations like the ones you've seen, and we'll see one more tonight. They spend a lot of time with expert adults in the community, and while they're doing it, we're finding that our students are learning and practicing effective communication strategies, uh, in authentic settings, and this is gonna help them for years and years to come. But, of course, we can only do fieldwork if we have someplace to go, so forging community connections is vital to a program like this one. A great deal of our out-of-class time, Zenovia's and mine and Bethany's, is spent contacting prospective partners in the community and maintaining established relationships with our, with our current partners. Uh, everybody is working together to provide the best field experience possible for our students. Uh, we couldn't fit all of our community connections onto one slide, so Summer's gonna just quickly go through three slides. Um, we have been overwhelmed, these are, this is a list of all the people that we have visited. Um, we have been overwhelmed by the welcome that's been extended to our students by the community, uh, from large organizations like Naval Station Newport and the Preservation Society, to individuals like artist and restoration expert Howard Newman, everybody has bent over backwards for our students, and in fact, we have had people say to us, "We've been, we have so much to offer the, the students in this district, and we've been waiting for somebody to ask us to help." So, we've just gotten overwhelming response from, from everybody. Um, the last few items on this list of community partners represent field study that has not yet been completed, but will be completed in the near future. Uh, this Friday, for example, we're being welcomed to participate in Salve Regina's Molecular Gastronomy Day, during which the students will work with members of dining service and chemistry faculty and chemistry students as they explore avant-garde chemical processes in the culinary arts.
This is an example of an interdisciplinary unit of study that we completed last month. I began to develop this unit last year, uh, when our administration agreed to expand the program to include a laboratory science. Um, this unit was inspired by student projects involving the Gilded Age. When I started to conduct my own research, I found that the Preservation Society was working on conserving the dining room chairs at the Marble House. Uh, when I looked at their research, they found, through chemical analysis, that the textile of the chairs was actually made of gold threads, and when they examined the gold threads, they found that they had been electroplated, and so, the chemistry unit was born. So, as you can see, we invited Mr. Howard Newman to come to our class as a guest speaker, and he spoke about his fine metal restoration projects on the island. He also shared with students his process of creating metal sculpture, which was really interesting. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, we read works of literature that reflected Gilded Age attitudes of wealth from various Um, the laboratory investigations that we conducted related to electroplating were borrowed from Cornell University's, um, Center for Materials Sciences, uh, library, lending library program. And then, of course, our fieldwork assignment was to go to the Marble House Museum, where we had a special guided tour of the Grand Salon Ballroom, and of course, the dining room, where we saw the, the chairs in person, and we got to touch the gold threads, so it was really, really cool. I thought it was cool. Okay. And then, um, finally, as a, as the final assessment, the students were asked to write an on-demand task where they synthesized all of this information and put it all together. Now, Keandre and Kevin are going to show their video, again, on the small screen, um, of one of the fieldwork assignments that we did and then took back to the laboratory of Newport Bio Diesel. Wanna introduce yourselves?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the...
And then, of course, our fieldwork assignment was to go to the Marble House Museum, where we had a special guided tour of the Grand Salon Ballroom, and of course, the dining room, where we saw the chairs in person. And we got to touch the gold threads, so it was really, really cool.
I thought it was cool. Okay.
And then finally, as the final assessment, the students were asked to write an on-demand task where they synthesized all of this information and put it all together. Now, Keandre and Kevin are going to show their video again on the small screen of one of the fieldwork assignments that we did and then took back to the laboratory of Newport Bio Diesel.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the school committee.
We'll come around the back.
My name is Keandre Ashton. This is my first year in the Newport Project. I'm a junior here at Rogers. Yeah, and that's it. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Rue, and this is my third year. I'm a junior. And what we really did is go in depth into the bio diesel experiment and created a little short film that explained our lab.
So Kathy, what's your suggestion?
Put it on here. And David and Beth.
David, we'll just come around.
Or go over there. Oh, no. No, put it over there. Then everybody in the room will have a view of it. Except Marson.
Can you get that on camera?
It's a short film anyway, so it's not gonna take long.
Put a mic?
Turn the air conditioner right now, because that's gonna take away a lot of the...
Can't turn it off. Come back on.
Where's the mic?
Welcome. We're at the Newport Project. During this time, we took a class field trip to Newport Bio Diesel. This is one of the employees at Newport Bio Diesel named Blake. One of the founders at Newport Bio Diesel named Bob was our tour guide and took us around Newport Bio Diesel and showed us what was there. When we went back to Rogers, we decided to make our own bio diesel from waste vegetable oil and obtain it from culinary. Keandre is measuring 200 milliliters of waste vegetable oil in the beaker. Here is Jose under the fume hood putting methanol into the flask. Charles using the graduated dropper to withdraw 1 milliliter of hot oil and dispense it into the 50-milliliter beaker. Celine slowly pours the solution into Vieira into the oil. Celine watching the solution takes effect as it turns pink. Justin reads and records what he is doing. Here are the calculations that the students use in order to get the right amount of solution to use for the full scale. Celine and Charles are here under the fume hood. Candia swirling the chemicals top flask until the K O H is completely dissolved. Jose is carefully pouring the 40-milliliter of potassium methoxide solution to the 400-milliliter beaker. Kevin and Keandre are keeping the temperature at a steady 55 to 57 degrees Celsius. After the waste vegetable oil cools down, Celine labels the beaker. Ariane is pouring water into the bio diesel. This is how the bio diesel looks when it is dirty. As it progresses, the bio diesel gets cleaner. When it is done, it becomes a clear gold-yellow. We are helping to fuel the future, one french fry at a time.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you. That's great. Nice job.
Good job.
Good job, guys. Good job, buddy.
Hello, my name is Candia London. I am a senior, and this is my third year in the Newport Project. Newport Project has helped me in so many ways because before I came to Newport, I was in Providence, and I did not like English at all. Like, I would not even try to do any work because I didn't understand it. And I came to Newport, and they had put me in the Newport Project. And I started to increase, and I started to like it. And then when we did fieldwork, I felt like it helped me more with essays and stuff. So it was just helped me in a grateful way.
Thank you.
My name is Summer Rogers. I'm a junior, and I've been in the Newport Project for only this year. But it has really helped me to see, to learn easier. Every time a family member like asks me, "Oh, how's school?", like, I always bring up the Newport Project because it's way more hands-on. So it's so much... It's so much... It's a better way of learning than just like doing the normal, like taking notes, studying, and like taking a test at the end of the week. So it's awesome.
Thank you.
Did anybody else want to say anything before we finish up? Okay. So as you can see, our last slide has to do with lessons learned and future directions. And when we say lessons learned, we're talking also about teachers. And I'm an old-timer, and I continue to learn every day.
Okay, so this is called the Ask.
Yes. And so we have certainly learned a whole lot as we've implemented and continue to develop the program. The most essential need, however, going forward, is the need for a dedicated space. The students participate in weekly group meetings, small groups based upon their individual needs and their interests, multiple conferences with teachers, and any other configuration necessary to fulfill curricular demands and also to complete projects. For this reason, we need a space that would accommodate a lab to conduct scientific experiments, a technology hub, a sound booth to work on multimedia tasks, and a quiet area for reading and writing. We are not here to ask, to request funding from the school committee, but instead, we will continue to seek grant money from the Van Buren Foundation. We've already met with a representative, and she is... They have expressed their support for us. But what we would like is support for this endeavor by allowing us to use space at Rogers High School that already exists and perhaps is not being fully utilized.
Next.
As Zenovia said, we're really not here to ask for money. We're here to ask for a little bit of space and for some suggestions from you as well. We're always looking to move beyond our two content areas. And in fact, we've been working quite a bit with a math teacher who is gonna be planning some interdisciplinary units with us for next year. He will not be an official Newport Project member during the same time of the day that we meet, but he will be a part of our team. We have also worked with several other teachers in this school this year. Because we are so devoted to collaboration, we're always reaching out to other people, and they in turn are reaching back to us. We've worked with Mr. Connell, Mrs. Bagley, Chef Cowbley, Mrs. Zilly, Mrs. Vieira, and Mrs. Panting, and probably other people I haven't mentioned, but luckily, they're not here. We're really looking forward to continuing to work with as many other teachers as we can and other departments as well, so that we can help collaborate in helping our students to achieve and grow into the prosperous adults we know they are going to become. On a more mundane note, we have found that transportation can be really difficult for us. Right now, we share one 16-seat van, and not a particularly nice one, if any of you've ever seen it, with every other program in the school, every department, including the athletic programs. With the exception of the carpentry van. And Mr. Ferrera, our carpentry teacher, has been wonderful in sharing his van with us. We couldn't have taken as many trips as we have just because he... Without him, he has really, really gone out of his way and is always trying to accommodate us. So that's been great, but that's stopgap. You know, that can't go on forever. It's his van. His program needs that van. If the weather's nice, he's out. So if the weather's lousy, we quick plan a trip sometimes. So we also go out... I don't know... We haven't really made this clear, but we don't all go out all the time together. Sometimes we go out in small groups, just one teacher, four students, and other times, all teachers and all students. So it's kind of incumbent upon us to figure out other flexible ways to get ourselves to where we need to go and to have an open mind about this. So Bethany's gonna speak now.
I'm speaking about scheduling options. So we've been really fortunate to have our ELA period and our science period scheduled back-to-back, and that gives us a nice block of time for flexible grouping, for laboratory experiments, and for our fieldwork. And the bulk of our fieldwork is done during that block of time. But as you saw our list of community partners, and we hope to expand upon that list, most community members don't do their business Monday through Friday between 7:30 and 2:00. So we definitely wanna look at scheduling options. And I don't know what those are, but we'd like to explore them. And then lastly, common planning time is a hot commodity. And our common planning time right now exists during lunch, and so we eat with our mouths open, and we talk with our mouths full of food. And we get a lot of work done, but it's never enough time. So we definitely need common planning time to be able to do our work and talk about kids and be polite during lunch. I think that's our Ask list. So we wanna thank... We wanna thank you for having us, and thank Mrs. Matoza for being here, and my dad, Mr. Secker, and Mrs. Rogers, and everybody else.
And if there are any questions, we will answer them the best we can.
No, I don't have a question. I just want... I have a comment.
Yes.
This is fabulous.
Thank you.
And it's exactly what our kids need. They don't all learn the same way. And what you're doing, you're covering the whole curriculum with one project. That's innovative. That's what it's all about. As far as space is concerned, I'm sure our facilities committee will work on that and work with the superintendent in finding some adequate and appropriate space.
We have a suggestion.
They have a suggestion.
Oh?
We've already discussed this.
The 500.
Scheduling we can't touch. I don't know a thing about it.
I just wanted to comment that this is so exciting, really, to hear that we have this going on in Newport. And of course, my head started to turn about maybe we could, you know, include some kids in the alternative learning program who might be, you know, also need a different pathway. And that might be another, you know, avenue I don't know that you'd be willing to explore too, but, you know, just...
Yes.
Anything we can do to support you. I hope that, you know... When will you hear if your grant funding goes through for next year? Have you applied for it so far for this year?
June 1st.
We're... We did not... We're not doing the early April application of the task, which we're going through in June. So we won't know... We won't know until the fall.
The end of the summer?
They may let us know sooner, but we won't...
Fantastic. Are there any other comments?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I mentioned to the other students, and you can go do your homework now. Yes, alright. Thank you, Ozzy.
Oh, that's great. I'm getting goosebumps. We have to clean. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we did resolutions and certificates. You know, this isn't part of the agenda, but I do have to make this comment. I think we should... This is what a school committee meeting should be. We need to know what's going on in the schools, and very often, we don't know. Some of the things that are happening in Newport schools are the best-kept secrets in the world. And these kinds of demonstrations and presentations are not just good for the kids, they're good for us, and they're good for the community because David is catching everything on camera.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think I've been saying this now for as long as I've been on the committee and even beforehand, that back in the... Many years ago, occasionally, there would be presentations, and quite often, school committee members would say, "Actually, I never knew these things were going on in the schools." And I think what is a message to the teachers also, who might think that what they're doing is, "Well, that's what we do." But we have such exceptional progress going on. And I think just looking around here too, with all of the art projects that would certainly be in museums, many of these. So I think this is something that we should continue and encourage our faculty and the students to keep showing off everything that they can do.
And I'm sure the superintendent will keep it up.
Yes. Absolutely.
Article 5, Reports from Superintendent and Staff. You wanna start with 5-1?
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. In front of you tonight, you have our usual month-to-month reports. The School-Based Coordinators Report, as you can see, is very lengthy. Ms. Clark has been very busy, and she has a lot to report out. I'm just trying my... I lost connection, so you'll just have to bear with me for a moment. No, I think I've got it. Oh, okay. Thank you. So what's going on right now is the application update is... Right now, we have 36 students from Rogers that have applied for our Career in Tech Program, 11 from Rogers, 36 from Thompson, 11 from Rogers. Out of district is 38 total, with 21 from Tiverton, nine from Portsmouth, seven from Middletown, and one from Narragansett. We also have additional applications that should be coming in shortly. We have set a timeline as far as when applications can be in, and we are most likely implementing a lottery system on May 20th, and we will notify all successful applicants on May 22nd. We'll send letters out. We will continue moving that forward. Marine Trades, we've had ongoing planning sessions going on, discussions, meeting with business partners, and we're in the middle of developing a curriculum for that. Engineering and Designing, we're working as well with some of our community partners, but we're also working with our own teachers and our own staff. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting this week with the department chairs to see how they can help support our programs and work together, just as you witness these teams... I'm sorry, this team of teachers in the Newport Project coming together and seeing what kind of math or ELA, science benchmarks, and standards we can be meeting as we work together on some of these hands-on programs and projects. I'm really trying to synthesize quickly here. Job Readiness Program, the World of Work is beginning on April 30th. This is a program that began with Marty Corcoran, Marty Lees, and others in the community. And they now come in, and they're working with Carrie Clark, our School-Based Coordinator. And they bring in people from the outside, retired professionals that work with our students to help develop those soft skills that students need when they go looking for jobs. That program will begin April 30th. There have been very... There's been quite a few students signing up for that, and we may run an after-school session as well in order to accommodate all the students that are signing up. The Marine Trades Fair, there's a report on the students that attended the Marines Trade Fair. There was also a Healthcare Medical Career Fair that they attended in March as well. Gonna keep going. We will have this posted too for the public as well. The recent activities, we had the Raytheon STEM Guest Speaker Panel. We had the KVH STEM Career Field Trip. We also had Skills USA State Career and Tech Competition. Upcoming events, we're gonna have a visit again to Raytheon for a STEM Field Trip. The Volvo Ocean Race Group Shadow, we're gonna have some of our students actually at the Village, shadowing some of the sailors, marketing people, and others. We're gonna... They're going to attend... We're going to, they're going to attend an Engineering Career Day at URI, and we have the DOT, the Department of Transportation Construction Day Workshop coming up. We are now developing summer programs as well, and we have Marines Trade Summer Program. We're trying to partner with others. That'll be a six-week program. We're working with Newport Hospital with a Health Career Exploration, which will last one week. We're also looking at Lifespan Youth Employment Program, which will go for eight weeks for our students. The RMTA Marketing Internship. I was fortunate enough to attend last week at the Bank of Newport. I attended the RMTA meeting, monthly, quarterly meeting, I believe it was, but they also had, RMTA has created a program for internships for students, so they get a variety of different experiences throughout the marine trades. And we're working with, I'm going to forget her last name, but Wendy, as far as setting up a second pilot program here at Rogers, so we can develop an internship program for our students here, and they're very interested in working with us. And Career in Tech, we have paid summer internship programs that are going on. I also would be remiss if I didn't mention councilperson Kate Leonard, who again, has already shared that she will continue to help support our students, working with the horticulture program. So, that program will be going on. We'll be sending out requests for applications very soon, so that our students can participate in that. Along with Ms. Clark's report, you'll also see the different pictures and photographs from the visits and from some of the students that came in to our school and did the shadow program, the eighth graders from out of district. School Vice Chair Hanos may have some information he wants to share as well, I don't know, just because he's been involved in partnerships, and we had a recent meeting today for the Career in Tech program.
Yeah, we've actually, sorry, I was reading the next report, because you're doing such a good job. I was reading the financial report, I apologize. But hopefully, I'm not duplicating what was stated earlier. We've met with Electric Boat in here, we're trying to incorporate a collaboration with those folks and offer up some new courses next year. It's in the very infant stages right now. We've met with local charitable foundations, we've met, as recently as this afternoon, with our federal constituency, to see if there are any federal grants to do this. Everybody seems to be excited and getting on board. There's a lot of support around the community for it, and we've got people coming out of the woodwork just to kind of help with developing curriculums and things of that nature. So, this is all moving in the right direction, and I believe we'll have a few more answers here very shortly as to where we might be going and how soon we might be able to open up some of these courses. But the need is there for the workforce out there, skilled workforce, even entry-level, as it is with Electric Boat, and then many other offshoots that are going to open up with the development of something that big and quantity. So, it's exciting, and I'm rolling up my sleeves and working hard with the staff. I mean, the staff has been fantastic. My hat's off to the staff in NACTAC. Chris Fisher, Jay Booth's been working on curriculum, Chris has been working on curriculum. And then, of course, Carrie Clark has been phenomenal with going out and getting this promoted, and getting these kids to actually come to the course. So, you could see that we got a lot of out-of-district interest, which is fantastic, which is something that I think we were striving for, and I'd say we're ahead of the curve on that one. So, I'd say thank you to the staff.
I have a question. I noticed that, you know, with the 85 people, do we, so it's two-part here, do we foresee that all 85 are not going to get in at this point?
We're actually having a meeting next, actually, it was supposed to happen today, but we postponed it two weeks out from today, a meeting with the NACTAC staff. Mr. Goss and Ms. Fisher have actually been at Aspen Schedule Training, so they know the priorities, band, NACTAC, and then how we're doing our academics. So, they've been working on a schedule. So, we've actually had, and the "we," Assistant Superintendent Jay Booth, Chris Fisher, Acting Director Carrie Clark, and me have sat down, and we've started, from our perspective, looking at how we could fit students into the programming, but we want the teachers there. So, we want to meet with them two weeks out, we want to show them what we have, and we'll probably have even better numbers two weeks out from now, and see how we can map that, the schedule out. The second thing is, which I mentioned earlier, which I think is critical, is working with the department chairs and the academics, and sharing the curriculum, and having them give their input as well, as far as what they think would be the best types of, give you an example, in the carpentry area, and speaking to our business partners, the math, the measurement, all that kind of skill sets, that is something they keep focusing on with us, and having those discussions with the math chair and his department to see how we can support the students in that way.
So, the second part of that was, you know, I hear you're planning to do a lottery, which, and I, you know, I mean, there's going to be a lot of things depending upon, you know, whether kids get in, there can be some, you know, some hard feelings amongst different people. I just think it's really important that we maybe see that policy, like that lottery policy, before it gets enacted.
Right.
To make sure it doesn't have any holes in it, because, you know, once it's sent out and kids are invited, and so, I've already thought of one thing, it's really important that we make spots for our military kids who might come in in the summertime, that we make, we can't ever tell them there's not, you know, a spot, so we just make sure we have.
That's a good point.
We have a spot or two left open for those, you know, the kids that come in in June, or not in June, but over the summer.
I have been in conversations with Vanessa Cooley at Ride, and she did give some suggestions as far as policy suggestions, as far as lottery.
Right.
I did come from a district that did have a lottery, and we did have a policy in place, and we did have certain parameters and criteria.
Right, that's what I was thinking, the policy, if they could just bring that to us beforehand, so we could see it.
Sure. So, Dr. Flowers, I'll be sending something your way for policy.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. A question for the superintendent, Madam Chair, please. Superintendent Germaine is, first of all, is there a policy, as my colleague, Mrs. Boland, said, is there a policy regarding a lottery, or is there a need to create a policy?
I think there's a need, there's a need to create a policy, and that's why I think we have to draft something to Ms. Flowers. We are excited that we have to hold a lottery, so we just, to Ms. Boland's point, we need to make sure we cover all our bases and make sure we don't exclude students.
Part two of my question, how does state law dictate the host community with respect to its own students? Are we in a situation where we will possibly be turning away Newport residents, Newport students, from the NACTAC program?
That is possible. So, it just depends on how the lottery goes forward. The preliminary discussions with Ms. Cooley is, it depends. It depends upon what the regional program wants to do, if it wants to ensure that all local students get in, then you take county students, that's a discussion.
So, if I understand you correctly, the Newport School Department, the Newport School Committee, by way of enacting policy, has the right by state law to dictate that every Newport school, Newport.
Newporter.
School enrollee, Newport School Department enrollee can enroll in NACTAC before any other non-Newport school.
So, that's a bigger, all right, so that's a bigger question, and it deserves further discussion, and what I mean by that is, as I said to the superintendents, the bigger discussion is about who's in charge for the Newport area Career in Tech Center. It happens to be located and situated on the Newport campus, Rogers High School, and it's also was created and designed to be a regional career and tech school. So, who is in charge and who makes those final decisions, I will share with you, I'm not clear at this point. So, I'm trying to investigate that and trying to see, is it the Board of Superintendents? Is it something, do we have bylaws I'm not aware of? Those are things we're still investigating. Our ultimate goal is to try to get every child that's signed up for the programs into the programs, but we do, by looking at the numbers right now, realize that may not be possible unless we have some scheduling shifts, and that's a discussion with the teachers to see if they feel we can open so many sections or not, and I can't answer that. That's something I need to hear from them.
Thank you very much. Does an outside district pay the Newport School Department the same amount of money per enrollee as the Newport School Department pays for our own enrollees, for our own students?
All right, so that's a good question, because at this point in time now, the Newport Area Career in Tech Center, revenues and expenditures fall under the Newport School Department realm. There is not a separate career and tech budget. There's a budget, but it falls under the auspices of the entire Newport School District. So presently, Newport School District students do not pay any tuition, and those sending schools do.
It's a wonderful program, Madam Chair, and my colleagues, but I would like to say that we're the Newport, well, I will say, we're the Newport School Committee, and I'd be disappointed if any of our students were left out of the program. Now, that is not up to, apparently, or maybe we're looking for, I am looking for the answer, and it could be that it's not up to us to decide. It could be a state law, something else that the superintendent mentioned, but it sure would be disappointing if we saw any of our students in Newport denied the opportunity to enroll in NACTAC. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just found on the website here that the application information, and I'm just paraphrasing here, that wherever the youngsters come from, in the instance of oversubscription, which is what we're talking about, they have a waitlist, and then they'll be contacted as openings become available, but there are a number of criteria that the students have to make. So, we don't know if all of those who apply really have met those particular criteria.
Do they give preference to Newport?
Well, it has, and then there is an application form for them to fill out also. So, we can always check, you know, the different state-level ones and...
Well, I was going to suggest that we would do some research.
Research first, before we write anything up.
And try to find, because that doesn't really answer David's question.
No, but I'm saying, but there is, there is, at least the first step is there though.
No, she's looking at our application. Okay, so we'll get answers, David.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Facilities report. Are there any other questions of the superintendent there? Oh, five-two.
Right, I think it's expenditure time.
Expenditure and revenue. Yeah, I skipped one. Sorry, Joan.
That's all right.
Okay, you were provided a copy today. I'm sorry it was late again, but we're working heartily on the budget and meeting with all the principals, and it's quite a bit of work to do. I am projecting an additional $47,700 addition to the deficit from last month, primarily by looking at substitute payroll and overtime. We had an increase in health insurance for a couple of employees. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I won't tie you up, I've got a lot of questions.
Sure.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
You just mentioned working with the principals, so are they aware that they have to solidly cut their budgets?
Yes, they are.
And are they doing that?
Yes, they are. We're working, meeting again on Wednesday.
And that's just to accommodate for next year, am I correct?
Correct.
Women, clarification, they also have addressed this year's budget. We asked them to address cuts for this year as well.
Okay. Are they reluctantly doing it, or how's that going for us all, I guess?
Well, basically, there's a spending freeze and a hiring freeze, so there is no, other than necessary expenses. I mean, we still have to heat the buildings and buy paper if they are out of paper, but the expenses are down. They have been down since November, when we, I mean, the problem is, payroll is, payroll and benefits is $29 million of the budget, and the other items are $6 million of the budget.
It's in staffing, obviously, as we have 85% of your.
Correct.
So, I guess with 10 weeks left, and in this fiscal year, what is your projection?
This is my projection.
1.4 million.
With 10 weeks left, yes.
We have to do some serious work here, and at what point are we going to meet, are you going to meet with us and discuss what the principals have recommended for cuts?
They...
Probably should ask.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, all right. So, we have follow-up meetings next week, I would say probably in another week and a half.
The reason I'm asking that too is I want to schedule a financial committee, there's no sense in doing a freeze there. So, the follow-up question with that would be, if it's 10%, is there a number of money for each building?
Yes.
It's not 10%, it's X amount of dollars.
No, what, okay, so let me explain what we've done. We separated the budget for each of the buildings into, one is like supplies and programs, and the other one is staffing. So, they have all that information. So, they're looking at, and they went into the budget, and they looked, first they went to their supplies, and they cut that by 10%, a minimum of 10%. Then they, now they're in the staffing part, and that is the most challenging one for them. It is something new, so we have gone through it line by line with them. We've kind of gone over some things for them to think about. You asked the question, have they been cooperative? Yes, they're being cooperative, but I will say, it is very challenging for them. It's a new way, it's, they've never done this before.
But they know they have to do this.
Yes, they do. Yes.
That's important. The last one, my question, if you don't mind, for next year, have you got cost drivers together for next year? We're still just concentrating on 1.4 deficit for this year.
What do you mean by have cost drivers?
Low cost. For example, you know, last year, we had DDA for the first time, I've been on this committee.
At this point in time, we're expecting a 1.1% decrease in health insurance, but an 8% increase in dental, and life is not set yet, because I guess the rate was going to go up 50%, so they're still investigating.
So, you're working on the cost drivers now for 2016?
Yes, I am, and we have...
I'm sure a few of those questions are on my bargain bill, so...
Sure.
Any more questions?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. I sent these in early for you. They were the question on, what does the 10% look like at each of the schools? Just because UCO is not broken out that way, so we can't really see, like a 10% staffing at the high school, is that, can we just look at it as 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, or is it closer right now to being?
No, Pell is higher, Pell is higher. I'm trying to remember all the schedules that I produced last week. I would guess Pell's about $9 million, and the high school and middle school are between 6 and 7.
Okay, all right, and did you break, is NACTAC broken out of that? Like, is that a separate amount?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't remember what the amount was.
No, that's all right.
But it's not inclusive, because it only includes the teachers.
That are NACTAC teachers.
Correct.
Right. Okay, then my other question was structural deficit. So, I mean, I know that we're looking at, it's just, it's a good number to know, so that we know what we are looking at, that in order to have the same program next year, how much money would we have to, obviously, we can't have the same program, but what would it take to provide that same program? So, I know I asked you, were you able to come up with a ballpark on that?
No, I was not.
Okay, so, I mean, I came up with it, and it's kind of, I know, you don't want me to say it.
I, Mr. Chairman, I...
You know it's more than 1.4.
It's absolutely what, so it's more than, I mean, it really, it's, you know, because we had, what happens is you get one-time monies that come in, right? So, I'll just name a few, like we had 112, well, this is, we had 112, next year, we're going to have less in state funding, which then creates a structural deficit for next year, okay? 112. But then we got $69,000 in trust money, we got $86,000, that was a one-time plug plug at the beginning of the year, which we don't have available to us again. We have, we also have to factor back in the technology person, the social worker, and the facilities director.
Okay.
Any of those, you already got back in?
No. All right, so, okay, so part of what we're doing with the city is the discussions we're having with the city, we're addressing that as well. So I'll just say we're having very good discussions.
Oh, good.
And we met today, and I think within a week or so, we'll be able to probably be more concrete. But I just want to, I just want to caution that I don't want to unnecessarily upset staff if we don't have to upset staff. So that's why we're going very slowly, very methodically, and I've even made some observations when we're looking at, when we're looking at each of the buildings and we're looking at each of the, when we're looking at the staffing, that we may have staff in some places that may not be able to be cut. And what I mean by that is, I'll give you a, for instance, at the elementary level, we have a cap on how many students can be in each classroom. We also have an unknown, and every year, way before I was here, every summer, we look at those numbers and we look at that kindergarten number. Now, we'll start the registration process in about another week or so, and for the next month or so, we'll start to get some numbers coming in, and we'll look at those. We are planning in our structure, because I also ask building principals to structure their buildings and their classes, we're planning on eight kindergartens. But I will say that everyone's very nervous about that. We're collapsing possibly some other grade levels based upon what we're learning as far as the mobility of military possibly leaving. But we will not know clearly, I bet, well, I don't want to bet on anything, but we won't know clearly, probably until October, and a better July. I will have to, and I've already started the process, look at the potential layoffs to make sure the district is covered, exactly. So that's going on as well.
Right. And I can't imagine how difficult this is because I don't know a program that we have that needs to be cut, you know, so I don't, you know, well, maybe they can be combined, but, Mr. Leary's laughing at me over there. But it's just going to be a really hard discussion, and the other part of it is, if we end up having to take a loan from the city, that might be a 200, another $200,000 payback per year that we have to pay back, which also has to be factored in, you know, if we end up having to borrow money from them.
Right. So everything right now is really speculation because I think there's, because I know there's discussion between the school department and the city, and I'm just talking about our staffs. I know the ultimate decision-makers are you, the school committee, and the city council. But I think we're coming up with some very creative and collaborative ways of addressing the finances. So I think you'll all be pleased. I know I heard on the other side that the city would be pleased.
So at what point are we meeting? I'm sorry.
I'm done.
At what point are we?
David, David was next.
I'll yield to Dr. Flowers or Mr. Leary.
Okay, I had my hand up before. Thank you. I'm just looking at, the increase in overtime is quite a chunk of change there. That's more than the increase in health insurance. May we assume the weather had a great bearing on that overtime? Okay, and-
Absolutely.
Meetings that are being held at Pell?
Is having, is having an impact, but I have not quantified it.
They're there anyway, okay.
They're not, well, there's additional staff servicing a lot of those meetings.
Yeah. So there's, some things are not really under our control yet, and obviously the weather wasn't. One of the smallest ones here is that increase in legal expenses, not negotiations around penetration. That is not a huge amount, but that's, that particular amount could probably be, in my estimation, put into better use than the classroom. Perhaps we have to really look at, at streamlining contacts with the attorneys. Perhaps there's some way that we can put all of the questions together rather than different people calling at the same time. I've mentioned this before, like a couple of years ago, that if I had a question, say, for someone, and maybe someone else does, can we put it all together, make that one call, that one billable hour, rather than spreading it out? It's just, it's not that much, but you put that for each month, that can add up to a lot of change, too.
Nice job.
Thank you for the information on the other point.
Mr. Carl, Mr. Leary?
Okay, Ms. Carl.
I'll yield to you, Mr. Leary.
When we have the meetings, at what point, you got meetings scheduled?
I'm-
For us to sit down with and review this budget? I mean, to me, it's a real number, and we have to accomplish that. We cannot, we cannot not do something that's not real, get this thing settled by the end of this year, you know?
I think you gave us some dates.
Correct. I did, I did, I did ask you to set aside some dates. Yes, okay. They're in your notes.
No, Mr. Carl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to compliment Mrs. Bowlen and Mr. Leary for bringing some important points to the public's attention. I'd like to make a comment and ask a question, if I could, Madam Chair. First of all, the comment, I believe that the '15 budget that we're operating under the 2015 budget is a budget which, when it was approved in July, roughly July of 2014, had, within the context of the budget, realized just over a $2 million shortfall. And the budget that was approved by the committee and that we are operating under now included, and please, Madam Chair, Superintendent Jermaine, or Business Manager, please, anyone, correct me. Business Manager Tracy, please, anyone, correct me. The budget was, the budget that the committee approved assumed that a $2 million shortfall, which would be made up within the course of 12 months. First of all, Madam Chair, may I ask, am I correct?
Yes, so far, so far, so good.
Thank you. And I'd like to pause and thank the superintendent and the business manager. It's a very difficult situation that we're dealing with. However, my, my comment is that I do not believe I'd be willing to support a budget. In fact, I'm, I'm quite certain I would not be willing to support a budget which did not have the savings in place at the time of the adoption of the budget. I believe we're in a difficult position now because the savings that we expected to realize during fiscal year '15 were not met. I would like to ask the superintendent, and the business manager, and the administration, and ultimately my colleagues, of course, through the adoption of the budget, to bring forward a budget which does not assume savings during the course of the fiscal year, but which is balanced at the beginning of the fiscal year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well noted.
So just to, and I think, end the conversation, to Dr. Flowers' comment about the changes that have occurred, you raised a very good point, that the majority of what you see in front of you, as far as the increase in the substitute payroll, the increase in overtime, the increase in health insurance expense, and the $6,000, were all things that were not under our control, due to weather, due to new add-ons in our staffing, and due to, we've had an inordinate amount of people that have lost loved ones. We have had long-term sicknesses and illnesses, so I just want to highlight that as well. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Joan.
Facilities report, David and Superintendent, you want to handle that together?
I think the facilities report is very concise. Tomorrow, we're going to have a Pell financial review with Jim Farrar and our own finance department. I do want to make mention that in today's meeting with the city, Laura Citron and her team, they volunteered Jim Nolan to come as well because it does in fact, impact the bond, so I want to thank them for that. So Jim will be at our meeting as well. I believe the roof fans are being addressed, if that's all done. The RHS roof project is in the works. We have the RFP has gone out for the architects. We've had some people on site taking measurements, looking at our roof. And as I just mentioned, we met with the acting city manager today, and we're setting up another meeting for next week as early as possible. Mr. Marson and Pat Fay will be arranging our schedules. Again, we've agreed we need to stay in touch on a weekly basis to exactly Mr. Leary's point, try to tighten up and have some hard numbers to present soon. But it's going to take both sides working together.
Any questions? David?
I would just like to add that as far as the facility subcommittee is concerned, I spoke with the superintendent, who spoke with the city, and our committee spent an awful lot of time on the roofs of Rogers High School, but at this point in time, it appears as though the city itself is taking the ownership of the roof. So our subcommittee will not be accepting or denying any bids. It's going to be on the city themselves. I know Mr. Taylor is in the rear of the room, he's on that subcommittee. So I just want to come out on the record and state that the school department will not be reviewing or accepting or executing that bid. It will be the city of Newport.
Our landlords. Any questions? Yes.
A comment, Madam Chair. I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the city's willingness in fiscal '15 to take over the capital improvement of the city of Newport School Department. But we are the Newport School Department. I'm very concerned about any possibility that the city of Newport, via the city council, makes the ultimate decision on the extent of any improvements that the Newport School Committee. And let me back up for half a second. I say this with great respect to my friends and to all who have served and who are serving on the Newport School, on the Newport City Council. The Newport City Council has its job, the Newport School Committee has its job. Often, we can find ourselves at odds, and often it's because of money. We might, as a Newport School Department or as a Newport School Committee, have the opinion that a certain expenditure is necessary for the best interests of the school department. The Newport City Council might have the opinion that such an expenditure may be necessary, but not to the degree that we suggest. We should look, in the short term, not necessarily this fiscal year, but in the short term, we should look at taking back the capital expenditure program from the city council, because then the decision as to what to expend on behalf of the Newport School children will be back where I believe it belongs, in the hands of the Newport School Committee. With, again, great respect to our colleagues and our friends on the Newport City Council.
That's a conversation that I think would deserve another, another meeting, maybe even a special meeting, because we arrived at the point we are now as a result of a meeting with RIDE, the city council and the school committee, last summer. And the city was informed that they own the buildings. They are responsible for the upkeep of the buildings by RIDE. That's when the tide turned.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, please? Of you, of the superintendent, or of anyone that might know, is that the case for all school departments in the city, in the state of Rhode Island?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how other cities and towns, what arrangements they have for their school buildings.
There must have-
But in Newport, the city owns the buildings.
There must have been a trigger effect then, Madam Chair, that caused the city to own the buildings. I strongly suspect it's because the city was so generous to us in taking over the capital improvement portion of our budget last year to the tune of more than $450,000. But in looking, I think, that's why I asked the question, I think in looking at other cities and towns, the school departments own the schools and the properties. They do not consider their towns to be landlords. If that's the case, then why are other school departments throughout the state of Rhode Island allowed to dictate, for example, in the case of a roof repair or anything else, why is the decision that of the, or that of the school department and not that of the local town or city council? I think we are the exception and not the rule. And I'd look for clarification on this from perhaps our attorney or other, or someone else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Just a slight comment. More years ago than I can count, I stood up at a council meeting and asked a council member who has gone to his reward, to what entity do the school's buildings belong? Because we were getting nowhere getting snow removal, it was one of those winters. And he said, you know very well those schools belong to the city. And I said, thank you. So that was probably 35 years ago. So, I mean, this is just, that's why it wasn't a surprise to hear that, you know, the schools belong to the city. And I think they used, like, we are the tenants, but we have that unique relationship that we say, this is what has to be done.
Madam Chair, one final comment, if I could. I was a proud 1988 graduate of Rogers High School, and during that time, Mr. Hanos, my colleague, the vice chair, was a proud '87 graduate. I think even the students at that time realized that the roof was in disrepair. And in 1991, the decision was made to invest heavily in repair of the roof here at Rogers High School. The city council had no part of that decision. It was entirely, entirely made by the Newport School Department. The Newport School Department went out to bid, and the Newport City, Newport School Committee subsequently authorized. Certainly in the case of a new building like the Pell School, we worked collaboratively with the council in order to put it on the ballot. But for repairs, prior to fiscal '15, apparently, the Newport School Committee has always been the authority, financially and otherwise, with respect to repairs to buildings.
Madam Chair? Yes, Kathy?
I'd like to point out that only the city council can raise money, and only the city council can go out to bond. And I think that's where, if a lot of money was spent on the roof that many years ago, I'm sure it was the city council that authorized the bonds. The school committee doesn't have that power. The school committee doesn't have the power to levy taxes, so therefore, the city builds the schools.
Madam Chair, if I could, one more point. My colleague Sylvia is absolutely correct. Only the council can levy taxes. However, the school department, the school committee by state law can spend whatever it wants. It can spend whatever it wants. And in 1991, in, in the fiscal year 1992, and I'd like someone to show me, I'd like to be wrong on this, actually, but in fiscal year 1992, the school department, the school department, the school, by the way, the school committee authorized the roof repair at Rogers High School, not by bond, not by asking the voters' approval, but by its capital budget, by its capital improvement budget. by its capital improvement budget. And, and also, it did so, I believe, by looking to lending authorities and others. I think the process was-
I think you're correct. I think it went through the city. But I think we should move on until we can-
I was just going to say, you are absolutely right about past years. But last summer, RIDE declared, RIDE said right here in this room, that these buildings are the responsibility of the city, the upkeep and the repair, that we are tenants, they are the landlords. That was last summer. But you're right, we have always taken care of our buildings through our capital budget, but we never asked RIDE what was the appropriate way.
May I, may I ask, Madam Chair, that we get a clarification from RIDE on that? What was the triggering effect? Why did we turn over our authority?
We didn't turn it over, we never had it.
So then-
You know, it's been many, many years.
So then it's got to be, then all 39 cities and towns then, or 36? Because there are several that have, or there are few that have combination school departments. They must not have that authority either.
I have no idea.
Can we get a clarification on that from our attorney or from someone?
I'll ask, we can ask RIDE.
I think, I won't be long, I think Mr. Collins' point, correct me if I'm wrong, is that, let's take the Thompson steps, for example. When we control the budget, we, when the steps are falling apart. And now, if it was right now, we'd have to go to the council and say, "We need new steps."
That's correct.
And we're recommending granted steps. And they can say, "You know what, you do need new steps and we're going to put cement on them." And that's what you're getting. You know, it's our building, which we're getting. So I think, if I'm wrong, we control what we wanted to fix and what kind of, what kind of work we did in it. You know, but now you don't have that control anymore. I think it's an excellent point, Mr. Collins. Let's find out what the other 39 districts are doing. I would think that most people have the budgets on their side, the school committees. I bet you, they control it all.
I think, I think Mr. Leary said what I took a lot of time to say. He said it succinctly there. That's exactly what I wanted to point out.
Okay. Move on to the next item. Item 5.4, enrollment reports and demographic reports.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna try to move us along, so you'll see that our, right now, we're at 2025 and as far as our enrollment. And then you'll notice, I just want to point out to you that these snapshots are taken at different times, but Clayborne-Pell, 900 students, 2123 of the district enrollment, how many students we have as far as total, that includes out of district students, so 2,123. Also, I want to point out, on one of our cohort comparisons, I just want to point out that there is some misinformation when I looked a little bit further into it, it has as far as the March mobility. I thought it was important that you saw during a month how many students. We have 26 new enrollments. We had one student age out. Two students, that's the one that needs clarification, that is not correct as far as dropping out, I'm looking into that a little further. One graduated, five home schools. So this snapshot gives you an idea of our mobility and how many children come in and out of our district and whether they stay in our schools or not in their schools. So I think that's really important. The other report there shows our demographics and a lot of people have always said, I'm always interested in that, so I will read that one out. Right now, our free and reduced lunch is right around 61%. We have in our schools about 46% white, 24% Hispanic, 25% black, Asian Pacific, about 3% and 3% Native American. I've also included this month because of the programs you heard tonight, that we're finding more and more the importance of offering alternative settings and alternative programs for our students. So this month, I included the Aquinic Island Adult Learning Center and what's been going on this year there. And you'll notice that we have quite a few success stories and I built upon what Mrs. Boland last year, if you remember in the spring, brought up how we should be tracking every single student and watching where they're going. So we do do that, we started that, this practice this year. Every week, we get a report on where our students are. If we put them in alternative pathways with the Aquinic Island Adult Learning Center, those are for our 16 to 18-year-olds that possibly are our own alternative, we now called accelerated learning program here in our setting, is not the best setting for them. So we've been working very closely with the community school, Tracy Shea, Patrick Shea, David Veer, they've all been great, and Stan Brown as far as the Aquinic Island Adult Learning Center. And just so people are aware, what we've had, so these are students that would possibly be graduating with us, with us or not. And we have eight students who are Rogers students who are still under the age of 13 that are concurrently enrolled with that program. We call them U-18, under 18. Alongside with that, we have nine former students under the age of 21 who have achieved positive educational outcomes since they've gone to that. So that's 17 students in total. And I don't want to, you know, go through the entire report with you, but I bring this up to you because these are alternatives, especially when the law changed, when students must remain enrolled in public schools until the age of 18. Public schools typically did not have programs for those 16 to 18-year-olds because at that point in time, as recently, I think it's less than five years ago, when a child turns 16, they could sign out and they were no longer the responsibility of the school system. They are now all our responsibilities as far as monitoring their progress and seeing where they're at. You'll also notice that some of our students, the GED, has changed significantly because the GED test is much more challenging and it's also, it's helped to better prepare students for the next stage in educational, in their educational life. So we have had some of these students, they take the GED and then they go to CCRI. So we're continuing their education, so there has been a lot of success in that. I would be remiss to say too, and I think it's been mentioned in this report, that at the beginning of this year, when I sat down with Tracy Shea and Patrick Shea, we had already set our budget. We have had quite a few students go through this program and their program has literally absorbed about $50,000 on behalf of the Newport school system in order to keep those, keep those young men and women in some kind of educational program. So I want to publicly thank them for all their efforts and everything they're doing. It's a true partnership between us. The other report you have in front of us is from our own accelerated ALP program. And as you can see from the numbers, 48 started with us and we've had success because, and I say that because we've taken some students that were in there and we've had to put them in new locations. Some of them are, what I just shared with you, over at the community school, being successful in that setting. The ones that say signed out, they, they were, I'm looking a little deeper into that to be specific on the why, because some of them have actually, out of their own control, because they were in either a group home or DCYF, entered, they had some involvement in some of that signing out. We now presently have 21, I'm sorry, then over the summer, just over the summer, we had one graduate. We graduated two by January of this year, so these are students that would have normally have been dropping out or weren't coming to school and we had them coming to school. We also had, we have three in and out of district placement because this setting and the other program did not fit. And then we had, in March, one graduated. And then we have others that are in the queue for graduation. And again, you can see the statistics and I don't, because of time, I'll just briefly share with you. So this is another alternative pathway we're offering our students. And I think we're finding more and more at the high school level. We need to have that hands-on learning, we have to have the alternative programs, we need to have, of course, our AP courses, our enrichment courses, all of those things. We have to really be there for each child as we go forward and do it in a frugal, efficient way. And that's what we're doing right now with our budgeting. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
A question on the ALP. I know we're doing site-based budget now and I like the idea of it, but that accelerated learning program looks at me as a very expensive program when you have 21 kids and possibly a $500,000 budget. And maybe the Aquinic Island Learning Center could take on something like that. I mean, it might be one of the suggestions to talk to the school. It's a very, very expensive thing to keep going and you're talking, each teacher's got four or five kids or less.
Well, I-
And I know those kids, but they start with more and I understand it's a good program, but at some point, we've got to address this $1.4 million.
Correct, I agree with you. But, so, and, and that is a lot of discussion because the reality is the budget. Because when we talk globally, we talk, is it better to address the problem now or do we address the problem five to 10 years from now when someone's unemployed or is not being a positive contributing member to our society? That's another consideration I'm just going to share with you. That's the importance of education. And that is why we try as best as possible to get everyone to understand the importance of education and, and it's not only, it's not only something we have to consider as far as the individual and the challenge those individual young people will face, but it's also an economic issue as far as, from a state perspective. The more, we all know the research, the more highly educated you are, the commonality is usually the higher the paycheck, the more successful, the more contributing you are to your community and society. So those are just things we do have to think, "I hear you." I'm just saying, "I hear you" and I understand what you're saying, but-
I think the Aquinic Island Adult Learning Center has been a good partner and maybe they could look into something like this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Bobby, it's interesting too, that if we continue to develop programs that we saw like, like the one we saw tonight, more kids will not have to be in ALP. They could be in that program and stay in school. So I think we're starting to make, make a dent in this. At least I hope we are. God knows it's been long in the making. Now, is that included in Newport School Department progress update?
Yes, some of, some of that information is, yes.
Okay. Is there anything more that you'd like to add to that?
No, I think the reports speak for themselves.
And we did not see anything on homelessness?
Yes, 5.5, there is homeless, there is a homeless report in there. And there was one additional homeless, homeless student since-
I don't have a 5.5.
Oh, okay. 5.4.
Oh, sorry.
5.5, actually.
That's number. Okay. Is there any, any comment you need to report here?
I just wanted to, for the public, and hopefully, one of the things I did have purposely, and I asked Marson to upload it, was I think it's important that the data highlights and promising practices for improving the high school gradu, rate, graduation rate that kids count and have already shared with you in our weekly updates. I think that's something that I've asked all the principals to share with the staff, all their staff, and also to make the community members and parents aware and of the importance of education. And if you just look at the unemployment rate by education level for Rhode Island and the first screen in this presentation shows that with, the, of the unemployment rate by education level, 17.1% have less than high school degree, 11.7% have a high school diploma, and then some with college or a bachelor's degree make up about 11.9. So there's a significant difference between those who have education and those that do not. And I just, I just think those are some things we really start to think and look at. And then the next chart, the next slide on that chart shows that the average wage earner for someone with less than a high school diploma is $22,000, whereas someone with some college or associates is $36,000, ranging all the way up to a graduate or professional degree to $68,000. So it's an economic issue as well as an educational issue. They're tied and linked very closely together. And just for the general public, again, we'll have it posted, but there are also signs in there of potential future, there are indicators, early warning signs for potential not graduate, the potential of not graduating high school. When you look at absenteeism, when you look at truancy, when all of those things that are mentioned in our report, it all starts to tie together why some school systems are being more successful than others. So I think it's important that we look at the whole package and not one component.
Okay. 5.6.
5.6, that was our-
That was it?
So.
Okay.
I'll stop talking.
All right. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Collins?
I would like to respectfully request that we take each section of the consent agenda separately and specifically, actually, I'd like to, to respectfully request that 6.1 and 6.3 be combined for approval and 6.2 be taken separately.
Is that a motion?
Second?
It is a motion, yes.
It's been moved in second that we approve 6.1, 6.3 of the consent agendas. There? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes. 6.2, personnel.
Madam Chair, if I might, I would like to request that we separate both personnel actions and we vote on each separately, please.
Personnel, would you like to introduce or recommend anything? You have any recommendations? Are they, are they as written?
My recommendations are as written.
Okay. Appointments. Boys Outdoor Track Assistant Coach.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, to move that we accept the recommendation of the school superintendent.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resignation of girls softball coach.
Madam Chair, I'd respectfully like to make a motion to reject the resignation put forward before us this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is highly unusual, but we will have discussion on your motion.
No discussion on my part.
Any discussion? David?
I have a question in this, not to incite anything, but I tried to make a motion before on a non-action item and I was taken out by the knees. Is this appropriate?
Yeah. It's action. Consent agenda.
Consent, okay. I apologize and that's only my clarification, thank you.
I move the question, Madam Chair.
So I can't ask?
Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon.
No.
I have something to say too.
Yeah, can, can we not accept a resignation or can we accept it with regret or can we, you know, I just wonder, can you not accept somebody's resignation and then they're still hired by the school department? I, I don't-
I've never heard of not, of it happening that way. I would accept it with regret, but you can't force anybody to-
I would like to add, I would like to make the motion then to, to say with deep regret-
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
You can't, but I'm amending it.
No, he'd have to withdraw that motion.
I, I respect, I appreciate what, what my colleague, Mrs. Boland, is saying. Certainly, you are able, as, as a body, you are able to reject a resignation. There's no question about that. I mean, I wish that our attorney was here with us, but you are absolutely able to reject a resignation. You can do it any way you want. I mean, the person does not have to serve. We don't have any right to compel the person to serve. And I would rather not get into a public discussion about my reasons for rejecting the resignation request, but I would certainly, I would certainly be- the resignation request, but I would certainly, I would certainly be happy to do that if necessary. However, Mrs. Gaines asked if there was any discussion. I, as the person who made the motion, said none, and I will stand by that motion. I have made a motion, there was a second, I would respectfully move the question.
Madam Chair.
He's moved the question.
Okay.
So, we can't vote?
We have to vote on moving the-
Right, yes. So, you've voted on it.
There's a motion on the floor to move the question.
Second.
What?
We don't have to vote on that.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to reject the resignation of Mister, of the Rogers Girls Softball Coach? Raise your hand in favor. Opposed?
I'd like to make another motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to add the word-
That will fail.
Are you making a-
Okay, count. All in favor of the motion to reject the letter of resignation? All in favor?
Aye.
That's-
I can't add a motion.
Well, we, Madam Chair, point of order. Point of order.
Yes.
Point of order, Madam Chair, we already had a vote on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
It was a three to three to one vote.
Excuse me.
Or three to three vote.
Excuse me, not, no, the vote was not counted.
Do we have a policy on recusals?
I don't have to vote.
No.
You can't be compelled to vote?
No.
Well, I know council has, you have to explain a reason for not voting.
What was the vote?
We don't. What was the vote, Marson?
I recorded a three to four vote.
The first time?
I did not see one person's hand up at the time.
I did not vote. It could not have been a three to four vote, Madam Chair.
Just ask for the vote again.
Show of hands.
All in favor of the motion to reject the letter of resignation of the Girls Softball Coach? Please raise your hand. That's three votes. Opposed?
So, I'd like to make a new motion.
Three, three. Motion fails.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the resignation with-
Make a new motion.
I am, I just said I'd like to make a new motion, that we accept the resignation with deep regret.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the resignation of the Girls Softball Coach with deep regret. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Discussion.
Thank you, I'm sorry, just a real quick comment. Not going to say much, because I don't want to embarrass anyone, particularly the students that have left the team or anything like that. But I've received a few phone calls, and what I've seen in emails and a few things that happened tells me the whole thing is wrong, and it should never happen, and I hope we correct this, it won't happen again.
I agree. Is there any further comment?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, I just want to be very clear that everyone has heard everyone's description and explanation of what has taken place. And that's all I want to say.
I have a comment to make, but I will make that comment after we conclude this vote. All in favor of-
I did.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we accept the resignation of the Girls Softball Coach with deep regret. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. This is a very delicate subject to talk about in open session, but I think as a matter of school committee and district policy, that we should meet an executive session and determine what we as a district hold sacrosanct as far as our athletic policy is concerned. And I think we need to do that, not now, but at some point in the very near future. I think it's important that the coaches understand what we expect and what our mission as far as supporting an athletic program is all about. And I'll stop there.
Madam, I would agree, but it would have to be an open session.
Not if we're talking about personnel.
But if you're talking about positions-
And policy, it would have to be.
Without individuals.
Madam Chair, I, I, I never like to disagree with the chair on anything, but we have with us as a member, Ms. Sylvia is probably the foremost expert on parliamentary policy, given her position. I would yield to Kathy. Or I would agree with Ms. Sylvia, put it that way. With great respect to the chair.
I agree too with Ms. Sylvia, except if we're talking about personnel, we cannot, if that were the case, I'd say everything I wanted to say right now.
I believe that personnel is specific people as opposed to job discretion.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, that matter's over and done with now.
No, it's-
As long as you inform the person or person in writing ahead of time.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I thought you meant just the policy.
No.
As opposed to personnel.
Okay, we have two more points.
That's it.
Okay, yes, we do have more to discuss. That's it for the-
That's it for a point.
I just lost my agenda.
No discussion.
We're done with consent agenda.
Yep.
Discussion, budget update for 2015, Superintendent.
I believe at this point, the director and I have given you all the updates through her report. If you have any other questions on both 7-1 and 7-2, please let us know.
Process for 2016?
Process for 2016, as I explained earlier, we're meeting with the city, some of the city council, no, I'm sorry, it's not city council, the city employees, and we're discussing how we can work together, collaborate, and we've got some concrete ideas coming forward. And then there are some dates proposed for moving forward as far as future meetings to be able to come back and share those with you. Two weeks from tonight, April 28th, May 5th, May 12th, and May 19th. We'd like to come back, and they may not all be long sessions, but I do ask that the committee please keep those dates set aside. If you would like to begin at 6:00 or 7:00, we just have to let us know.
Can you say those again, 28th and May?
They're all on Tuesdays, and the first one is two weeks out from today, April 28th, May 5th, May 12th, and May 19th. May 12th is your regular school committee meeting, evening, so we hope to have something for you on the night.
What was the one before May 12?
May 5th.
You just sent an email, right, I remember.
Yes, that's okay.
She did.
I did, I saw it now.
Five, 12, and?
Okay, and as I noted also in the notes, I'd like to continue to work with the Finance Subcommittee, and then we'll be sharing information with the Subcommittee, and then having further instructions on how they would like us to continue to work. We already have been given some guidance and recommendations by the Finance Subcommittee.
Okay. Pilot program, 7.3.
Yes, I did put this on the agenda for this evening. We were very fortunate that at Thompson Middle School, working with Principal Crowley, we did have an angel donor that's helping support our community, that wants to support the community in public education. So, we've started a mini-pilot at the Thompson Middle School, offering an alternative pathway for some students that are having trouble or considered at risk due to some of their behaviors to have an alternative educational setting that will help them get back on track. Hopefully, it's being proactive before they come to high school. So, we started that partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, and to Mr. Larry's point, I think this is a good, also possibly another alternative for high school as well. So, it's a mini-project we're using with the middle school, and it's, so far, it's been very successful as far as the students getting back on track and as far as the culture and climate in the school, although they weren't really having any, I would say, large challenges. Principal Crowley wanting to deal with that 2% to 3% of the student body, that, you know, maybe we should start to get on track now rather than waiting till they get to high school, we've implemented the program. And as it shares in the briefing, it will provide an off-campus setting that offers alternative structures that include mentoring, one-to-one support during the school day, and alternative pathways for the students to receive their academic instruction, and services that include tutoring, online service, online learning software that we'll make available to them, and again, the daily monitoring of their attendance, their behaviors, and watching their academic development. So, we'll keep you apprised of that. We'll probably have a report mid-May.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Question for the Superintendent, please. I see in the background, the information provided, that, first of all, I think it's a wonderful program. Is this program or any actions that we, that are taken? Is it a necessity for the Newport School Committee to authorize the program to move forward?
No, that's within the Superintendent's purview.
The program's aligned to your goals. If you notice your goals, specifically finding alternative pathways for students, helping to increase the graduation rate. We have had in the past, we're trying to extend the day for some of our students. We already have that in place, working with the community school. And we've also had summer learning programs in the past, but we've started to ramp this one up so we can have more data. So, from my perspective, as far as charging me to implement the goals of the school committee and overseeing the management of the programming and curriculum for the schools, I did see it as something that was possible, working with building principal, and then also finding alternative funding to support it.
Are we using, another question if I could, Madam Chair. Are we using any resources from within the Newport School Department? Specifically, are any teachers being asked, or any personnel being asked to not just participate in this program, but are any financial resources from the Newport School Department already budgeted being used as a part of this program?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so the teachers that are involved are being compensated separately from Newport School Department, from their role as a Newport School Department employee?
Yes, it's posted and they apply.
So, any, any teacher could have applied for the position, or any assistant could have applied for the position?
I would, I would further the discussion with Principal Crowley, because I know before we actually received the funding, he did seek out, and we had substitute teachers that he was using at that point in time. So, I'd have to follow up with him.
Okay, see, is any, is Tan aware of this situation before it was implemented, or are they learning about it like I'm learning about it, after the fact, I suppose?
In the weekly update, I had brought attention to this, that we were working on it before it was implemented.
Absolutely.
I provided the structure. I provided what the program was going to entail, and I also provided that we would only be able to implement this program if we were able to find a donor or alternative funds. So, I did keep the school committee informed on what was happening and what might possibly happen in the future. As far as the funding of any staffing or anything like that, that is being used with the funds from this program, and as we're doing with the budget and the financial, having our principals take more, being more involved and taking over more leadership and as far as directing and oversight of programs, Principal Crowley has been involved with this from the beginning, and he has been involved in hiring who he feels is appropriate, and that's how it's moved forward.
And thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Superintendent Jermaine for that explanation. I am aware of the notices sent by the Superintendent, and the Superintendent certainly has kept us up to date as to what the, what the goal is, but I, I'm seeing that it's an April-through-June program, and I'm wondering, I guess, this may be a stupid question on my part, but if there's an outside agency involved, and the funding is entirely private, absent the fact that it involves our students, why are we? I don't understand, what is our role in this?
We're being informed. We're being informed of a pilot program, that's why it's only April through June.
Actually, excuse me, there's two components to it. It's actually, I think, April through July.
Okay.
Because it's extended school day, and it's during the summer.
All right, so we're simply being informed as a school committee of an outside agency that is involving itself with Newport School children?
I, I wouldn't say it's an outside agency. We have private funding to run a pilot program that would further our goal of keeping all kids actively involved in their education.
I'm still puzzled, but I will, I will-
No, 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 what is it you don't understand?
The question is, what is, well, here's, here's a question. What is expected of the Newport School Department for this program?
Support, moral support.
Moral support, only moral support.
That's it.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Am I correct?
Yes, we, well, we have oversight to it as well.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
We have oversight to it, and we're running it, and we're collecting the data, and we're tracking the children's progress.
All right, we, we have oversight of the program, it's not just a moral support situation.
Well, it's administrative, isn't it? Yeah. This is just under discussion, at least we know.
And that's exactly the reason why I'm asking questions, it's a discussion item. We have, we have support over the program, it's not a moral-
You won't be surprised when someone mentions it to you.
Okay.
I have one comment.
Yes.
One of the biggest problems with our other ALP program, when it was purely Odyssey, where, you know, not this year, but the year before, was that students were constantly on their phones. I would suggest that a policy be adopted of some kind about, about phones inside the class, you know, that's just something to think about, because it was a major problem back in, before you came.
Right, and so, we've, we've addressed that.
You have, okay.
I hope we have.
David?
I'd like to make a brief comment for the individual who's out there, the angel that's out there that did not want to be recognized. I want to say that I'm in full support and thank you for your generous donation for a pilot program that we are attempting to catch these children at an earlier age to keep them into the system, and I just want to come out as vice chair and say thank you to whomever you are out there.
And I would endorse that, thank you.
I echo that.
Is there any further discussion? 7.4, I would really just skip, but I have spoken to the Superintendent. This idea came from a session I attended at the National Conference, and I've spoken to the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, and a few others in the system. We already encouraged this, and we don't need a policy to direct the administration to only hire people with this dual certification. A lot of the elementary teachers have sought on their own to have dual certification because they recognize the value. So, we don't have to discuss it unless somebody else wants to.
I would just make a brief comment, Chair, I would not be a fan of this. I would think you would want the elementary education teachers to have a math background to build up on math test scores versus hiring somebody with a special ed background. I'm not saying either one's right, but it's just encouraging, it's fine. I do know for a fact, there's been a couple of people who have been here, elementary teachers, that have- teachers, that have had math background, had the best scores in their elementary classrooms, you know, so you've got to think of the other students too, but that's fine, just encouraging it, no big deal.
Okay, did you want to add anything?
No, that's fine, thank you.
I'd love to move on.
Yeah.
A triplet school, next steps. David?
Can we put that in with the triplet action item, please?
Yes.
Oh, I was going to postpone, oh, you want to discuss it?
You can pretty much do whatever you want.
Once you discuss it, then we can just, I can postpone the other two, we can move on.
Okay. Did you want to start?
No, go ahead, Ms. Gaines.
I had added this as a matter for information before we got to the action item. Item 8.6 talks of turning the triplet school back to the care and custody of the city. And I had some questions, not that I'm opposed to it, but we have a lot of things unanswered when it comes to our future needs for the city, and I was just a little bit afraid of letting go of the one property we have left. So, that was my comment, that do we need to do this right now, or can we wait until we have more information? David?
I would like to talk about this discussion and state quite simply that we, we did make some comments at the last meeting with the, the City of Newport Council. We do have a deficit looming above us. We do have a property that has been sitting for quite some time, and as the roof leaks and deteriorates, although Ride told them it was their school, I don't see him rushing to put a roof on it right now, even though it is theirs and we're getting ready to give it back to them. I, I do have a little bit of confusion with that, but the action does need to be made sooner than later. I know there was a feasibility study that we were interested in to see if quite possibly we were going to have more children than we needed. We needed some expansion. We definitely have early learning and pre-K out in Middletown, so there was a genuine concern amongst some of the, of, you know, my constituents out there, that the students are going out to Middletown and to give them a place to bring them back into Newport. But with all that being stated, I would, I believe that the Superintendent is going to speak on this in a minute, I won't speak for her, that if there's some type of a, of a, these schools don't get sold in a year, or two years, or three years, or six years when the city gets them back, and I just would think that it would be, it would free up some funds for us right now that are stuck within that, that are allocated for the work on that property, and it would also show that we're making a good faith effort to, to go ahead and tackle some of these budget deficit issues. So, I'll yield the floor to whomever would like to discuss it, but I certainly would like to see something happen here tonight, whether it be we retain it and, and make a motion for, when it's time, to do a feasibility, or whatever the case may be. I think it's, it's time to get going on the triplet school, one way or the other.
Bobby?
I think, you know, I read, when I went home that night, I spent probably two hours reading the report, the report that was done by Newport Collaborative Architects, and I mean, it's repeated over and over in there that this, you know, the school, that the, whatever the system was, let's say electrical system, it's beyond, it's all, you know, its use, every single system in there. And so, you know, I actually called them and I said, because they didn't want to come right out and say, you know, because they'd been, you know, asked to do that big report, it was nine million then it came out, could it be done? I said, could it be done if we had, you know, say, two million? And he said, I don't see, you know, like, it's, it's a huge, huge undertaking, it's going to take a lot of money, it's going to take a bond issue, I don't think the cities, he didn't say this part, I'm sorry, but, but after he said it, I can't even see it being done for two million, you know, this building. I, you know, and after I walked away from that, I just thought, we don't need to spend the time on a feasibility study to, to figure out that, that that building is not going to need major overhaul. So, I, you know, I mean, my gut tells me it's, it's time to, I know it's scary, but my gut tells me it's time to make a move on this.
And I, go ahead.
No, you're good.
I would agree. I was going to ask Superintendent Jermaine, and she can say no, for a couple requests, if possible, and postpone when you get 8.6 and 8.7 to next month's meeting. The quest would be, how much does it cost us at Kennedy right now? And if it's too much time with the budget, you can say no to anyone, it has like three requests. What would it cost for Kennedy to run it? You know, we have, you know, we get the rents, you know, the revenues versus the cost of us with the custodian and the nurse and things like that in there. And then what's it costs us to keep triplet open as it stands? It's probably just electricity right now, I'm not sure it's even that, you know, what it's cost that.
Minimum gas.
Maybe consult with the city, third, I'm sorry, maybe consult with the city. They're going to be doing Broadway over very soon. We can use it as a staging area, maybe possibly the city would say, we'll give it the money for that and make a deal, nobody's talked to them about that. And last, I know this is a lot, you can say no, believe me. Last is that possibly consult with the city about moving the student preschool students over to Rogers, obviously not in September, you know, but down the road, if they would allocate some money toward renovations to do that. I know it's a lot, so you can say no to anyone, you think we've got too much time on the budget right now.
Oh, no. No, no, it's actually part of our conversations with the cities. Joan was with me today, and actually, I did raise, knowing that triplet was coming up on the agenda, I did raise the question about if, that I observed that part of the challenge is, if we do have more students, and we do see the need for, you know, a pre-K setting for our students, would the city, do you think, and I know the acting city manager and the finance director cannot and will not, you know, they can't speak for the city council, but I think they felt, of course, we want to work with you, and if it were a year from now, like they said, because we're just starting, they said they don't even think anyone would blink an eye, because the relationship is so positive and collaborative. But the acting city manager, Joe Nicholson, basically said, of course, we'll support you and help you, we're going to help, we're going to put the children somewhere. So, that was their, their response, because I did sense that possibly if you do take action tonight and the building does go back to the city, will there be some flex room for the school committee and the school department if we are not able to find any other setting within our own buildings? And I was kind, again, knowing, and I know that the acting city manager cannot speak for the council, but he, he led me to believe, I trust, trust him, that we'd be able to work something out. So, that gave me a large sense of assurance and positive feeling, positive about moving forward. Do you have alarm on that?
It signals that I took up too much time at your meeting tonight.
Well, I kind of thought maybe I've been talking too long. Time's up for me. Give me the hook here.
It says, Colin, shut up.
When your batteries are wearing out, you know you're going to lose.
Okay.
It's a call, you shut off.
Yeah, I know, that's it.
No, not Colleen, Carlin.
Oh, it is a call, shut up.
No, God, no, 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 no. Carlin, not Colleen. That's the signal for me to quiet down, not our Superintendent.
You answered a couple of questions already, I guess, basically.
Right, yeah, so, we have looked into that.
I guess we could look in the cost of Kennedy and then the cost of triplet and keeping it, and I'll just maybe postpone those two to next May 12 meeting for action item, you know.
I would support that.
Okay.
So, I have a good question. Yes. Well, is there, do we know if there's going to be any, are they offering any compensation to this company to house things in that parking lot, or is it, are they going to use it anyway?
They can use it.
I don't know, I would think they could use it.
Yeah, I would think that that was part of the, part of the contract.
They might be in their budget money, and maybe they could turn that money over to us.
Well, chances are, the city had to provide them with, with space. I mean, I'm in favor of doing it tonight, but I don't know, you know, if there's the will here tonight to do it, or, there's the will. I'm, you know, is there?
I don't know the big guy.
There's only one way to tell.
You're right.
When we get to that eight-point whatever.
Eight-point-six, all right.
Okay, eight-point-one, Sandra?
No, I just wanted, no, all I want to say is, you mentioned about four different things. Number five, we know coming down the road is going to be pre-K, like, for everyone, and also what happens if Middletown says, hey, we need the whole of Kennedy School. So, I mean, these are issues, that's why we can't rush into something right now.
That's why we shouldn't, but we can.
I think, I think we have at least one more, this year coming, I, I agree with you, I don't know beyond this. I think as a community, I would think you as a school committee are going to make some decisions about how we would move forward after the 2016 school year.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Kathy.
Has, have you been looking at Rogers High School also, the possibility of moving pre-K to Rogers?
You know, I don't think, there's always a possibility, but until you have information on dollars and cents, you can't make an intelligent decision. We have one suggestion, one company has looked at, at triplet. Nobody has looked at Rogers as far as cost of retrofitting it for little ones. That can be a big ticket. We need all that information in front of us, we don't have it.
Is there no area that wouldn't have to be retrofitted, except for restrooms for the little ones?
I don't think so, that was built for big kids, and we're talking about little kids.
Madam Chair, if I may, I went through the building today with Gary Michaels, and we saw two possible areas. The 500 is a very, very, very doable area up there.
Where's 500?
Home ec.
Is that home ec?
Yeah.
That's what Newport Project's looking at.
That's the space this school wants.
Well, we've got to deal with this, we've got to see how much it costs us to keep going in Kennedy, you know?
Yeah.
But, so, I mean, that's a doable, and also behind the auditorium, but it seemed more doable up at the home ec of the 500 area. There's three rooms, a separate, a separate wing, it's got a lot going for preschool, and I think more important than anything, you're going to have high school kids here, invoke tech program, you can encourage to come into working with preschool kids as teacher assistants like. So, I think it has a lot going for it, I know it's not going to happen next year, but I'm, I'm a fan of, of doing that and see what it costs to get the bathroom fixed.
Yeah, but we need those costs in front of us.
Oh, I agree, I agree, it's not going to happen.
So, I just need clarification. So, do you want all these costs by next month? I have the summer, right?
No, 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 that would be too much work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that would be too much work. No, I just think that, if you know what it costs-
It's getting late, I just-
I know.
Yeah, we're starting to get kind of ditsy.
We can talk about retrofitting Rogers down the road.
Okay.
We had a conversation with the council about entertaining money for, we have to retrofit Rogers.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's a good start right there. And the other one is, what's it cost to keep triplet open, and what's it cost to keep Kennedy as it is, like, next year? Is that too much too now? I know it's budget season.
No, Kennedy, we already know, because Kennedy's part of our budgeting. It's in our budget. And triplet's the only other one we would-
We have costs for triplet?
We had some costs that are over a year old, and it was, I think, if my memory serves me correctly, it was between 700 and 800,000, just to get it doable. But I know-
To open the doors.
Right, but I know there are some concerns about electrical and also the air quality.
Right.
Okay, where are we?
Action.
Eight-point-one, calendar.
Oh, here we go. All right, so, you have in front of you, and I think Mr. Leary, you want to speak to this as well? All right, so I did meet with the union, and I did propose calendar eight-point-one, it's-
182 or 184?
182, and then the next one's 184. And Mr. Leary wanted to have a discussion about the second calendar, 184, and I'm going to let you take over.
Okay, I guess I'll go back to you in a second, then. My concern here is that some, some school committee 20 years ago, so, negotiated a 184-day workday schedule, and they were concerned parents weren't getting in, so two of the days would be in the daytime they'd have, in nighttime they'd have parent things. And I'm not sure, maybe it's out, useless now, maybe it's going past that, I'm not sure that's the case, but for us just to give it back without asking the union, maybe you have, for a compromise on something like this, because you're talking over $200,000 of money that's on the table, and we're just saying, oh, we'll go to 182 days, let's just cut them to 182 from 184. It's a lot of money, and unless they maybe want to do one more professional development day, drop them, or one more day of kids in school, it's hard for me to tell somebody sitting in the school committee 20 years ago saying, you worked hard and gave something up for this to get those two extra days, and now all of a sudden, we just give them away, just give them away, and you just gave up 200,000 dollars.
Okay, so, just for clarification to explain this, so, I have had a discussion with Tan over this, and as I have shared in my updates to you, for the teachers, they were, there was a day, a day out of school where they would have the parent conferences, and so the children would, as you see in the 184 calendar, they would go two more days for the year. The two years I, well, the year and a half I have been here, and we've been through the winter season to help accommodate, to shorten the calendar so we wouldn't go so long into June, the teachers have considered working the full day, and then they would hold the conferences later that same day. So, it was a kind of, they compacted everything, they did a double shift, and that's how they have referred to it as a double shift. So, that is, I believe, you know, the one with the 82 is the one I shared, and I want to be clear, this would be for one year only, and we would have to go into an MOU, I believe we said, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I believe we said we were going to do that, and just for a year. So, it's not something in forever, it was a memorandum of understanding for one year. But I do hear Mr. Leary's point, and that is why he asked that the second calendar be on the agenda.
It wasn't 20 years ago, Bobby, that was, that was one of our committees that extended the school year.
No, definitely not us, I can tell you that, not since 2001, before that, because my kids used to go to, they had that day off, I remember, back in the 90s.
No, they had 184 days?
Back in the 90s, absolutely, I can guarantee you 90s was there. I know, I know many before that. Yeah, I guarantee you.
But I know at one point, we were, we were trying to get to a 200-day school year, and increasing the, the calendar a couple of days a year from 180 was how we got to 184. You remember that?
Yeah, the State Department of Education mandated that we had to have parent conference stays in the spring, and that's why we went to the 184, to accommodate that, because before that, we just had them in the fall.
In the fall.
So, so I guess the answer for the union, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Jermaine, is that I don't know a district, I taught school a long time, I don't know a district that doesn't have two parent conference days at night. I know in West Wall, we had them in November, and we had them in February, but we went to school all day and you had conferences at night, you know, so it wasn't like they're doing double, double duty here.
But some people can only come-
I would think that this, every single district in this state, and I don't have research to prove it, has night, they go to school X mile days and the night thing, so I don't see it as double duty. I see it as that, as a compromise with the union, say, listen, come to school one more day with the kids, take one more day professional development, and we'll get rid of this. But just to give it up for nothing, and we're fighting over little things with a contract right now, and put $200,000 on the table, is absolutely insane.
What would the MOU state?
The, it would just, for-
I guess I don't understand, you work a full day, and then you're working a second full day, having parents come, and buy that out. I guess I'm confused, I don't understand.
So, if you go to Portsmouth, or Middletown, or West Wall?
I'm talking about, instead of coming in for five hours on a day when there's no kids, we did 11 to 1, 5 to 8, and we're going to do that all in the evening, and the kids can still-
You still have kids at that time, you're not giving up any-
It's, it is a riff.
The other day, if the kids don't come-
It's still about the same number of hours, it's just that one day has all the hours comparable to two.
I would, I would think that you would have parents come anytime they want, personally. I wouldn't worry about the five days, so I think you're based on 184 days a year.
But parents, women, okay, women, let's-
Wait a minute, wait, wait, one, one at a time.
No, no.
This was not initiated by Tan.
Right.
We just agree that if this is what the Superintendent would like, we would agree to this.
I want to, I want to, I left out a very important part. I had several parents calling me and coming up to me in the spring, asking, why do the children get a full- me and coming up to me in the spring, asking, why do the children get a full day off? And a lot of families were not in favor of this from a parent perspective. They had to get daycare, they had to get childcare. And actually, it broke up though, the teaching week. You know, it was very disjointed. You had one school off one day, another one off the other day. There was, and for families that had children at all different levels, it's very inconvenient to get those days out, those release days. So, that's the reason I brought this forward and asked if the, if they would be favorable to this.
Why not just have one of them this year anyways, for trial basis? One, the parents can come in daytime, instead of two of them.
She said this is one year with a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, that's eliminating both of them. That's eliminating November and February. Why don't we keep one of them?
Oh, no. No, you can't do that. You can't, you can't eliminate conferences.
I'm thinking, I like Bobby's compromise here of just, especially the February one, it's been eliminated two years in a row due to bad weather, pretty much, and kids being in school. And, and also, I, you know, I think that it's really important that that first conference be, that everyone really show up at those conferences to, you know, have that initial contact with the parents. And I would hate to see them shorten the amount of time in those conferences, because I know one year we went at the elementary school, the 10-minute conferences, and that was, it didn't work. So, I, you know, they need to stay at 20 minutes, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, so...
Make a motion to affect this.
No, no, we're still discussing it.
So, I don't know, that's, could we do that kind of a compromise, or how would it affect the calendar then?
Just one more day.
It would just put, it would, right. It would put it out one more day.
Okay. And, but then we would have the first set of conferences.
It would put it out to one more day, and then I also have to go back, and I have to talk to the teachers' union.
Talk to them, yeah.
Oh, then we're giving both days, otherwise. Then we have both days. We don't want one compromise.
I don't, I don't understand that. What is the problem with 182 days and the agreement with a memorandum of understanding in hand, that this is a one-year trial? What's the problem with that?
So, I guess my question would be, what was the problem we have in one day of those as a one-year memorandum? Why, how's that any different? Except, so in November, you at least have the opportunity for parents to come in daytime and nighttime. You'd have the parents of somebody who works at nighttime, in the service industry or whatever, could come in at least once this year in the daytime. If someone in the school committee put this in effect, I mean, I don't want to belabor it, but I'll make the motion right now to, for one of these days. If I get a second, then we go from...
Okay.
One of these days.
One of these parent conference, teacher conference, in November be stay as is, and then the, the one in February be withdrawn and as a one-year only deal.
That means one conference...
I'll second that motion.
Discussion, it's been moved and seconded. Does that mean there would only be one parent-teacher conference during the year?
No, you have the one in February, too.
There'll still be two.
There'll still be two. You still have, you still have February, because you have school in February in the days.
All right. And I, and I do, I do, I do need to say this. Teachers meet with parents all the time when requested, all the time. So, I just need to say that.
You said double session. It blew me away.
So, the public understands parents can communicate and come in and visit with their teachers at any time. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's a motion and a second. As a clarification, Mr. Leary, would the last day of school still be the 23rd?
It would be the 24th.
24th.
So, you split the baby essentially?
Correct.
Okay. And the other one ends on a Monday, and I don't know too many kids that are going
to show up on Monday?
It is on Friday. It is on Friday.
Right. And if we went to the other one, the last day of school is a Monday, I don't
know too many children that are going to show up on Monday?
Right.
That has happened, yeah.
Right. So, make a vote.
Do we understand?
No, I don't. And I would like to know, what is the recommendation of the superintendent?
Okay, my recommendation was presented. I understand the compromise. I think, I'm, I think you as a committee need to decide if you want the compromise. But I made my recommendation when I, I put the calendar in. But you are the school committee, so you decide.
David?
Madam Chair, with all due respect, could I ask for a vote? Or is there any more? Can we, I mean, we've made a motion, and it's been seconded, so...
You can move the question.
The parties are aware that the date would be, the final day of school would be the 24th on, on calendar eight point one. And if everybody's in agreement with that, I ask that we take a vote on that.
Well, the motion on the floor is a compromise. This...
Yes, it is. And it's, I think it's the way that I explained it, that the date, because I asked Mr. Leary, he's understanding, and I, I think the superintendent realizes that the star last day of school is not the 23rd, it's the 24th. So, it's a hybrid between the two. So, I just want to be clear that the parties know what they're voting on.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Do you need it repeated? The motion is to accept the compromise that Mr. Leary has offered for the school calendar nineteen, uh, nineteen, 2015-16. All in favor of his motion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
A show of hands?
A show of hands for the calendar, please.
Passes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven, zero.
Policy eight point two, wellness. Becky?
It's, it's a really...
Well, actually, Sandra, you might...
Well, yeah, but I'm just going to, this is, this is Becky's baby here.
Right.
The updating the policy intent, as it says here, for policy number 5300. And you're the one who brought everything to us and showed us what has to be put in and deleted.
Right. It's, it's, you know, this policy, we've, you know, beg, borrowed, and stolen from some other districts who've done a really good job of putting together the policy. There's an incredible amount of backup on this. There were some controversial things that before, I'd like you all to make sure you get, you know, I know this was a lot to absorb. So, before next meeting, make sure everybody's really read it, and make sure you don't have any questions before the second reading. Because tonight's so long, I don't really, this would, you know, might turn into a 10 or 15-minute discussion. So, let's, can we, you know, just...
I agree. And if you have any questions, if you have any questions, don't wait until the meeting to ask them.
Right.
Call Becky, call Sandra, call the superintendent, and get your questions answered before you come to the meeting.
Understanding that this, this is because of the new regulations.
Hunger, 2010, healthy, hunger-free kids. It's a federal, it's a federal mandate.
It's a federal mandate.
That we update this policy.
And we have a timeline. So, if we don't, if we don't have this by the second reading in May, we're going to be behind the state requirement for updating, okay?
So, I move that, that we...
First reading?
This would be the first reading of this policy, and that we will re, you know, take this on at the next school committee meeting for second reading.
I'll second that motion.
You've heard a motion to approve for the first reading the district wellness policy number 5300. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Sorts you down.
Okay. And then, the next one is policy 5370, which you've already had the first reading. And this was the extracurricular activity academic eligibility. And we had discussed it quite thoroughly. You'll see on your copies that anything that's in red has been put in. This really clarifies a number of issues for the student eligibility at, at the secondary level.
Is there a motion to move?
No, no, don't put the motion on yet. Don't put the motion on yet. So, just because I, I actually, you know, I worked on this last year, and I wasn't able to make the meeting this year. So, I reread the policy, and I actually called Mr. Colley today, and there are some things missing that...
Motion in second and discussion.
Yeah. So, so I will make the motion that we table this till next meeting. That's my motion. Because there's some, there, and I wish, I mean, I just talked to Mr. Colley this afternoon. There's some, some glitches in it. If, if we do pass it tonight, there's a couple of things that need to be changed. I could go into the detail right now, some things that got missed, that, that, very small changes, but very important changes on it. So, he agreed with me today that...
I second that motion.
Okay. So, then anyway, let's just table it till the next meeting, till we can fix it.
You have to submit it in writing.
I will.
This is the first reading. This is not the second reading.
No, she said it was the second reading.
No.
This is the second reading.
This is first reading.
This is the first reading.
This is the first reading.
Okay. Mrs. Flowers said it was second. That's why I said we needed to table it.
Okay, I'm sorry, because it's...
I'm still taping it.
Okay, I apologize.
So, we should still take...
Because we had gone over this, and I was waiting. No one submitted anything.
Right. And Mr. Colley just didn't read it, but he didn't read it beforehand, so he didn't see the...
Oh, okay. All right, I stand corrected.
So, we could still table it, and we just have to read it twice.
But if we tape, tape...
Table it.
We won't pass it till June, right?
That's it. We have to get this...
All right. Well, we could do the, what?
Can, question?
You can amend it on the second reading.
Or amend it.
We can amend it on the, I understood that it was the second reading tonight, and that's what I, I was having the problem with. So, I, can I take my motion?
Yes.
Withdraw my motion then to table it.
It's okay. Madam Chair, may such an item be brought up at another school committee meeting? It can be done so that we can get it in on time?
Yes. Well...
Yes. If we have a meeting for finance, for instance, it can come to that.
Okay.
I think she, she withdrew the motion to table.
Drew the motion, because...
Okay.
Amendments can be made on second reading, as long as it doesn't change the whole intent.
Right. And that was what I was just going to bring up. If we're going to bring, bring these motions to the table, and then we're going to read them to get out of here on time, and then amend them to the point where they're not 100% what they were, then I will not support anything like that.
Right.
I won't. It's either here to be read, or it's not here to be read. It's either tabled or not, in my opinion, my humble opinion at that. But we cannot change something that Ms. Boland stated. They're subtle, but they're very important. So, that truly is not a first and then a second reading to me. That's a, let's get it on the table, and let's, I don't like that idea. I would support a tabling of the...
Okay. I'm going to go back to my original, let's table the motion.
Get the recommended...
I will. I've already talked to...
It's been moved. Remake your motion.
I've moved to table this till next meeting.
I second that.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Meal rates.
Are there any questions on the proposed meal rates?
No. Is there a motion to accept these meal rates for the next school year?
So moved, but then I'll ask the questions.
It's been moved. It's been moved in second discussion.
Why you have to do it? Because you have, the federal government requires that we, that the meal rates, that what happens is that the paid, the children who buy their lunch don't subsidize the cost of, of the free and reduced lunches. So, you have to have them within a certain percentage point. This gets us closer again, right? This, this, so we've been raising them by 10 cents a year until, and we are one of the lowest in our area, right, still right now. So, this is something that we really have to do by law. It's mandated.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
We have one.
We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Investigate solar alternative. You know, we have, Dave, you want to address this?
Yes, very quickly. Before we, before we had, we had a facility subcommittee meeting. We had a gal, Bridget, who is, she's got her, her expertise is in alternative green energies. She went and wanted to facilitate an audit that wasn't going to cost the district anything. But I felt that it was important that the district approved this audit to be done so that everybody knew what was going on. This is merely, in my opinion, a formality to get this going, and that everybody is aware that it is, is an audit that's being put on by URI. It won't cost the district anything. And I just believe that it should have been brought ahead before we go ahead and have an audit. And that's, that's really all it's there for. So, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second it.
Discussion?
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Bryan. Is it Bridget?
Yes.
Bridget, yeah. This might result in solar panels.
We'll find out.
Savings.
Madam Chair, thank you, and thank Mr. Vice Chair as well for this.
Thank you. Number eight, oh, it's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Eight point six.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to postpone this to the May 12, 12th meeting. If we get a second, if not, we'll vote on it, whatever you know.
It's been moved in second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One, two. Motion?
Madam Chair, I, I'm sorry. I just completely lost track of the vote. I, I apologize. The, my board docs didn't come up in time, and I'm, I'm not even certain what the motion is.
I was about to postpone the vote on Triplet, turn Triplet back to the city. I'm sorry, that's my fault. Turn Triplet back to the city. Until, until Ms. Jermaine's going to come back with some information for us on consulting with the city, especially about the, using, if there's money involved with Triplet as being a staging area for Broadway, the cost of Kennedy School, what's it cost us, and then the cost of Triplet School to keep it open. So, we have three things there, and consultation about Rogers, and she already done that, about, about moving preschool over another year from now. So, just get more information. I'm prepared to vote on it in May. I'm prepared to vote tonight. But I think if we get more information, it'd be better for us. And it's not going to...
Okay. I appreciate that explanation, and thank you, Madam Chair, for that liberty. May I ask a question of my colleagues?
Yes.
Particularly Vice Chair Hanos and Mrs. Boland. What is the, because I am, I would tend to vote for the motion made by the original sponsor of the action item. If the original sponsor of the action item wants to delay it, then I think that, that I, I am ready to give the, the courtesy to the original sponsor of the action item. But I'd like to ask my colleagues, what should I be aware of that I'm missing here? No discourtesy. I just, I just respectfully want to get this going. Okay. There's no discourtesy to Bobby whatsoever. Yep, understood.
I don't think that a month is going to change it.
No.
No, we're looking for more information.
Right, that's all.
And the second thing was just that there's some money that'll be freed up, that will be used to help us with our deficit.
That's going to come up next.
Well, that's the next question.
So, officially, was it four to two, Mr. Colley? Well, I asked for, I don't know if I made an official request of the chair to ask for a revote, but I missed the vote, so I would ask for a revote.
All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Six, five to two.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Mossman's coming on the agenda for next month, right, May 12?
Eight point seven.
Eight point seven, the same thing. This is reallocate capital funding set aside for Triplet roof, which is, I think is $240,000, which we need to apply toward the deficit. But I want to get more information on Triplet and on the stuff we already talked about. So, I will also postpone this to March, May, May 12.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Same two.
Five to two.
That's it.
Consistent. Consistent.
Nine, one.
We did meeting dates.
We did meeting dates for our budget, and our next meeting is May 12.
No.
Correct. We have a tentative scheduled meeting, Madam Chair, Friday, this Friday?
This Friday?
Eleven thirty?
We got to go back?
No, we don't have to, we don't have to go back anywhere. That's just, that's an update to the meeting dates.
Oh, Saturday, the meeting we were talking about, in closed session? It'll be Saturday at 11:30.
No.
April 17, it's Friday.
Right.
What time?
11:30 a.m.
Okay.
It's posted.
It's posted. So, we got the other people, right?
Then, there's a tentative. Please flip it over. Oh.
In the afternoon, same day?
Why is it in the same day?
Yeah.
Because we're waiting for a reply.
Probably to see which one they commit. Right. It's either or, it's not both.
Okay. It's either or, it's not both.
At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. Madam Chair, quickly, and it's on, it's not on the, it's not on the agenda, so I'll use a point of personal privilege if I could.
Okay.
I'd like to remind all my colleagues that tomorrow morning, Bank Newport and our own Rogers High School invite all of us to attend their third annual financial education fair. It's being held in the gymnasium at the high school from nine to 10:30. I encourage my colleagues to attend. Thank you.